Yeah. Oh, you're right.
All right, we'll get started. Call to order the September 5th, 2018 City Council Meeting. The clerk will call the roll. Record for those who are in attendance.
Anderson Burgos, Bartley.
Here.
Presnehen, Leahy.
Present.
LeBron Martinez.
Here.
Leacy. McGee.
Here.
McGivern.
Here.
Roman.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Tomlin.
Here.
Bacon. Valentine.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
The city of Hoyok.
And the city council.
A couple announcements before we get started. Counselor Valentin said she could not make it tonight. She wanted me to let you know. Counselor Anderson Burgos is going to be running late from work. Seeing how we moved everything to Wednesday, a little time crunch, time changes. Also, our legal department, Crystal, will be running late. She had soccer practice with the kids Wednesday, so she will be here if there is a legal question. We'll just defer it until she does get here, okay? With that said, one other set of announcements as we get started. As we all know, in last time we met, and I do thank Counselor McGivern for stepping in on my behalf, my president, Mr. McGivern, in running the meeting for August, I do appreciate that. As far as that, since our last meeting, as we all know, we've had some people pass away in the city of Hoyok. One of which is our former auditor's wife, Josh Pichel's wife, passed away, Carla Pichel. Tom Hogan, former vice, uh, vice principal, not president, vice principal of Hoyok Public Schools. I know him well because I was always in trouble with him. Very nice guy. And lastly, also very tragically, Fran Lavelle, as we all know, JP Lavelle, as well as the restaurant up by the mall. Just a great family. She was just a wonderful woman, always had a smile, always a kind word. It's just been a very, very tough time in Hoyok, so I'd ask this council to please give a moment of silence.
Todd.
And former alderman Dan Knapp, thank you very much, Counselor Bartley. It's a, anyway, if I'm missing someone, please let me know.
I'd also like to throw in my uncle, who passed away this past week, John McGinty.
Very, very sorry. So, as we all know, it's tough times, but we want to recognize those, the members of our family, you know? Josh served, served the city. The Lavelle family's always been very good in the community, helping us out, and so on and so forth. So, I'd like a moment of silence for all those who have passed. Thank you. Thank you very much. With that, we'll go right to the agenda. Item number one is a petition from Verizon for Walnut Street.
I'll make a motion to take up the table, open up the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is to move from the table. All those in favor, all opposed. Counselor Bartley?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we grant, grant the petition, but I, under discussion, if I may, if I get a second.
Second.
All right, Counselor Bartley?
Well, I, the memorandum on this, Mr. President, is relative to the construction going on on Walnut Street with the new juvenile court, and they're under a time delay. I believe we all received the same memorandum. I, I am, I advise the council for Verizon that I would support this. I think I've said on this microphone multiple times, the frustration I have with Verizon's flouting of Massachusetts state law relative to double polls, and I've repeatedly asked them, again, I repeatedly asked them after receiving this petition. I was, I was advised I would get an email from the director who's in hand this, Mrs. Cummings, radio silence, of course. So, I mean, they, they have to get this done. I, I mean, we can't possibly hold up such an important project for downtown Hoyok for, for double polls, but I just want to make it known that it is a law. It's a mass law. It's not, it's not a city ordinance. They're supposed to remove them. But that being said, Mr. President, I, I think this is, it's a very important project. Also, it's almost like a legacy project, Mr. President, if you will, for Mattie McDonough, because this is his property. If, and, and he was a great believer in, in the city of Hoyok, too. So, I think it's important that, that we, that we pass this, but I don't want it left unsaid, that I'm so frustrated by Verizon.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, I don't think it's something I'll be voting for tonight. The fact it is a double poll. We have a lot of questions that aren't answered, such as, you know, how much are they gonna be giving? How much is the assessed value gonna go up? Without having any information in front of us, I can't see how anybody could do their due diligence and pass this tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Leacy?
I just wanted to note that item number 10 on the agenda is a communication from Albert Bissett, junior Esquire, related to this petition, so.
Motion to take up table.
Second.
Motion is to suspend rules, take up item number 10.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 10 is a communication. The Hoyok Park and Recreation Department has been working with the Office of Community Development, Mayor's Office, Department of Public Works. This is for the Veterans Park.
Yeah, that's, that doesn't sound right. Two different areas.
Number 10, what?
This is communication for Verizon.
This one before it.
Petition.
Albert Bissett.
All right, honorable city council members, Verizon New England, Inc. has received an order from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts telephone service regarding the juvenile court located at the corner of Walnut Street and Suffolk Street. In order to provide service, the new conduit, beginning at Dwight and running along the southeast side of Walnut Street to the new courthouse, is required. Verizon has submitted a petition for a new conduit, and in order to, has placed on the agenda for the city council for September 5th, the Commonwealth has asked Verizon to expedite, place a phone line so that the service is available on or before September 15th. Verizon is prepared to form the work as soon as the city approves the above petition. However, in order to meet the Commonwealth's deadline, Verizon will need to begin placing the conduit no later than September 6th tomorrow. Accordingly, Verizon respectfully requests the Hoyok City Council accept and approve the order. Signed, Albert Bissett. So, that's the communication. Counselor Leacy, you still?
That was it. I just wanted to make sure that we read that into the record.
Okay. And Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for bringing that up, Counselor Bartley, and I did get the email from Mr. Bissett. Of course, many of us know Mr. Bissett. He used to work here with the Solicitor's Office many years ago. But I did get a, a talk to it, somebody just about within the last half hour, about the double polls. And I guess there's some, you know, up on Westfield Road and some down on Main Street by Spring deal. So, I, I understand your frustrations, and I hopefully then get the message to take those polls down, because, you know, here we are getting a vote to do something that needs to be done, but I think Verizon should get the message to try to take these double polls down, in that, in those areas anyways.
Is there someone here from Verizon? All right, motion would be suspend the rules, allow the representative to speak. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Please come to the mic, state your name, address, and then make sure it's on, just tap it. Tap, tap the mic.
Underneath.
There's a switch. Perfect. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paul Reisinger. I'm the representative for Verizon.
Can I keep this, or do you need this? I got it for you.
I have the petition here. Verizon New England requests permission to lay and maintain underground conduits and manholes with the wires and cables to be placed therein under the surface of the following public way. Walnut Street, place one four-inch conduit on the southeasterly side of Walnut Street, beginning at a point near the center line of Dwight Street, and running in a southwesterly direction along the southeasterly sideline of Walnut Street, a distance of approximately 190 feet to a point. Place conduit, the reason to place conduit is to provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications, and to serve a new building located on the southeasterly side of Walnut Street. I'll be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
All right, Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. How much exactly is Verizon paying the courthouse here to have their polls there, or their intent?
I have no knowledge of that.
No knowledge of that. So, how much will the building be assessed at with the value added?
I have no knowledge of that either.
Who'd have the knowledge of that?
Either Albert Bissett, or someone else at Verizon, I'm sorry.
So, unlike Mr. Tomlin, I don't know Albert Bissett, so how come he's not here today?
I'm not sure. Verizon typically hires contractors for these public hearings.
Okay, and I'm sure he's a very solid person, but him saying the state needs to have this done by tomorrow. You know, the state also, you know, backed out on the Quinn bill, so, you know, should we bend over backwards for the state when they kind of don't do that for us? I don't know. I'm not voting for it. I can't see how anybody else could. Thank you.
Anyone else? So, the motion was to approve.
Oh, Mr. President?
Yeah. Counselor Bartley?
Well, I just want to make sure that we, it is a public hearing, so I just want to make sure we allow the public.
Allow members to speak.
Allow the public to pro and con, and then we can close the public hearing if you want, if you so choose, and then we can take a vote.
Motion is, so, we did open the public hearing.
We did, we did open, we, we motioned to open the hearing, but we've just gotta let.
So, now, is there any member from the public wanting to speak in favor or against? Having heard not.
A motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor LeBron Martinez, you have a question?
Yeah, I just got a question. If we did not vote on this tonight, would that hold up the project that is in process, is my concern?
Based on the communication, they have to start by tomorrow. In order to get done by the 15th?
September 15th.
This has to go to the mayor, and the mayor signed off on it, so it's not gonna happen tomorrow anyway.
I'm just reading the communication. Anyway, Counselor Bartley?
Well, just, I mean, I, I'm, I'm gonna motion to, are we granting the petition? Okay, motion, motion to grant the petition.
Second.
Second.
Petition is to grant the petition was seconded. Clerk is gonna call the roll with regards to the petition. You vote yes, you vote in favor.
Leacy? Yes. McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
No.
Sullivan?
No.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Presnehen?
Yes.
Leahy?
No.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Eight yays, three nays.
Your vote, you're approved.
Ah.
Eight? Or do we need nine for the petition? I thought it was seven.
Eight.
Should be seven, right? Yeah.
Majority.
Is it eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it was eight, eight, you need seven, so.
So, but we had eight.
Eight.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you're fine.
Okay.
I heard, ah, so I was like.
No, it's me. I thought, well, I thought we, I thought we needed nine, Mr. President, I was gonna just table for a minute.
All right. It's a Wednesday. With that.
Partially my fault.
Item number two, laid on the table. Minutes from the June 19th, and special meeting for June 28th.
Motion to approve and have Mrs. McGee explain what MMC means, please.
Motion is to approve, it was, it was seconded, and the clerk, suspend the rules to have her answer initials.
What, yeah.
What is it?
What is it, Brian?
Your mic's not on.
Her credentials.
Yeah.
What is it, Brian?
Her credentials.
Her credentials.
Okay. Okay, oh, I didn't know what it was. I'm just asking. Geez, it's, it's no. What am I gonna tell you? Well, it's no to me. Ah, I never noticed.
All right, so everyone had a chance to look at this. I guess there were some questions last time, but we're all set. So, motion is to receive the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And number three is a, committee of fans was referred an application for taxi licenses. Recommend that the applications be approved? I think this was tabled because at one point we said no, but then we brought it back because we thought these were new licenses, if I am corrected on that. Yep. All right, so we're gonna just leave it on the table until we, I think these were new taxis compared to what he had.
You need an inspection from the police department?
So.
Lay it on the table?
Just leave them on the table.
Table, okay.
We have a motion to go out of order, because we have some people here, we don't wanna keep them in the audience, which would be item 41.
Motion is to suspend the rules, take up item number 41.
Second.
Suspend the rules, take up, what?
Oh, abbreviated reading.
Keep that on the table. So, 41, seconded. This is a proclamation for September as awareness month, attendance awareness month. With that, I will ask that we suspend the rules to allow Mr. Meariarty to come up and speak on behalf of this. Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
All in favor, all opposed? Mike, how are you?
Very, thanks very much, very well, Mr. President. Thank you, everyone. Just to briefly explain the nature and purpose of the proclamation. Counselor McGee, who is my ward counselor, filed this at my request. The city of Hoyok has been a part of the Campaign for Grade Level Reading, a national network of communities that is engaged in working to raise the early literacy rates in our cities to a higher level. One of the core elements that is believed to affect low literacy outcomes is if you have a high amount of what is called chronic absenteeism, finding kids who are missing more than 10% of school over the course of the year. For that reason, I've asked for this proclamation. The school year is just beginning. The school department is also signing off through Doctors Reich on a similar proclamation, and the city council, city school committee, excuse me, will be taking it up at their meeting very soon. The intention with this is simply to join in the network, be on a map showing that the elected officials across this city are supporting greater attendance in our schools, and recognize the value of a high level of attendance in increasing school achievement. And so, I, I would ask you to support that. There really is no further action necessary on the part of the board. Verifying that this is the case would simply be a matter of showing the minutes of this meeting were to be approved.
Any questions for?
Make a motion to approve it?
Second.
Motion is to approve it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then also, taken out of order, because the chief is here. It'd be 56, 57, and then there's a late file.
Make a motion to take out a turn of the late file?
Second.
Take out the late file. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This is late file E. Yeah, late file E. So, motion would be to suspend the rules and take up late file E. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This is. The Hoyok Fire Department has been awarded a grant by the Federal Emergency Management Agency under assistance of the Hoyok Firemen's Grant Program, or Firefighters Program, an amount of $975,000. And we did take this up in finance, a brief discussion with regards to the bond packaging. So, the reason this is coming up as a late file, it is an emergency simply because there's a timeframe to it. We have 30 days in order to act on it, or our window passes. So, it came in after the agenda was filed, hence why it's a late file. With that, under discussion, Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, just, so quickly, Todd, so it's a grant for $975,000, but you said there's a match to it as well?
Yeah, the chief is here. He's gonna explain all the numbers with regards to it. So, motion to suspend the rules, allow the chief of the fire department to speak. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chief Bond, if you wanna go through the grant, and then.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you. I guess I'll, the grant is assistance to firefighters grant, $975,000 towards the purchase of a ladder truck. It's a 2017 grant, and it takes that long for it to come through the whole process. So, there is a match, it's a 10% match, and it is, it's funky government math, because $975,000, you would assume that your match at 10% would be $97,500. But the math here from the government is $88,636 is the match for that grant, leaving the city with $886,364 towards the purchase of a new ladder truck. So, it couldn't have come at a better time. Obviously, you know our needs for, we need two ladder trucks. So, with this grant in addition to the bond, it, it really helps the city out.
Could you just back up again? Could you just say those numbers again slowly for me?
The city's match is $88,636. The total award that is gonna be given to the city is $886,364.
And, okay, so we're gonna bond for $88,000 to get a brand-new ladder truck?
Uh, no, the, within the bond package that we were looking for initially for two new ladder trucks, that amount would come out of that bond package.
So, what's that?
The full bond package?
Well, that's, there's more orders to come on that, but the original bond package was for 2.5 million. So, the night when I came in to see the finance committee, I asked for a lesser amount. I subtracted this amount, looked for 1.625. And then, there was a discussion about either keeping that bond or staying close to it, and purchasing another vehicle, which would be Engine 5, which is the Quint, because that has to be replaced within two to three years as well.
Chief, chief, I'll just stop you. And Counselor, I'm sorry to cut you off, I don't mean to be rude.
It's okay.
Um, the reason I wanna take up all the orders is I'm gonna allow Counselor McGivern to explain what happened in finance with regards to all the different ways of looking at the bond, how many apparatuses, if at all. But I wanted to take up the late file, too, to kind of throw it in there, because that's the one that's time-sensitive. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Counselor McGivern, who has the notes from the finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm, I'm happy the chief is here tonight to, to fill in all the blanks, because Counselor Leahy's questions are very good and important as to what took place in finance, and what finance is recommending that, at least one option, or two options that could happen this evening. What we did was review the original request, which was a bond for two aerial ladder trucks. The reason that we need two aerial ladder trucks is, if you look at the trucks we have now, typically over the years, the fire department has run with three, one being offline, but being the backup. That third truck right now is completely out of service, could not back up anything. If anybody wants to purchase it, you know, there could be an RFP coming out pretty soon, but it is nothing that the fire department can use. The number two truck is a 2000 truck, not in good shape. It's 15 years of service, and it could go into reserve because of the years of service, but it should not be on, online for, for a number two truck. And the number one truck is a 2002 ladder truck with a reasonable service left on it, but nothing that will, will get us through much more than a couple of years. The idea that originally was with the bond, which was before the finance committee was for 2.5, was to trade in the two trucks and to bring number one into, into a reserve status, and to get two new trucks. We have a couple obstacles in the city of Hoyok. We have to get specially-made trucks because of our low railroad bridges in the lower neighborhoods that will go underneath those bridges, and we have to make sure that they're suitable and doubtful to get into all the neighborhoods. The chief explained the bond, which we were aware of, although it was not in the finance committee, of the 886364, and a 10% match. That match will take, if we do decide to bond for two trucks, or we have a second proposal to think about this evening, that match will take, that match will be met through the, through the bonding process and through the purchase that we're making. Currently, there's also some other issue. Chief vehicles have $100,000 and $85,000. These are the Ford Explorers that we see often out there of miles on it, on them. And the Quint is still in service. Chief, I think you told us that we might make it a year or two down the road with the Quint, but at this point in time, Counselor McGee made, made an observation that if we're going to bond, is it possible that we would be able to get a deal if we added the Quint to the, to the manufacturer and to get a better rate? So, the chief's duty was before tonight to see if we could give that and ask the mayor to resubmit the bond with a number that will give this council the option to do one or the other. If we, you know, if we take all, all this and look at it, the, we did have a talk with the auditor about our debt limit, and there's no doubt that we are, been adding to our bonding, we've been adding to our borrowing, and it is an issue. We are okay as far as the debt limit ceiling goes, but keep in mind, you have to pay back bonding, and that's a, a budget item on an annual basis. So, we did talk about some, some of those things that would, would have an impact on it. And we asked the chief, and I believe what we're taking out of order here is the $2.6 million that would cover the Quint, the two trucks, and the two command vehicles.
That's correct.
Okay, and that's the proposal, option, we'll call it option number one. If we wanted to do anything less, the only thing in front of us would be the 2-point, 2.5 million. We call option number two, which would be just the two aerial trucks, and at this time, we wouldn't be able to do the, the full project that we think is worth taking advantage of. It's, it's a lot of money, I remind, or at least my own opinion as far as bonding goes, is these trucks typically have 10 to 15 years of service. If they're kept in good shape, they can be, you know, kept even longer, and the miles are kept off of them. And bonding means that we don't pay for them upfront with one generation of people's tax dollars, but spread it out over the years, so multiple generations pay for trucks, and the trucks are used by multiple generations of Hoyokers. So, our recommendation is, is option number one, which would be the late file that's before us, pending that we accept the, the $886,364 grant.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. This is a huge grant, obviously. I don't see him in the audience, but usually he comes along. Does Jeff Prescott House have anything to do with this grant?
Oh, he is here.
He is here.
Did he do it? Yes. Birthday to Kelly, too.
Yes.
Which is fantastic. I mean, this is huge. I'm all in favor of it. I do understand the debt ceiling, and I'm sure everybody in here, hopefully, they all understand it as well. It's like when you go talk to Mike Murphy and you're looking for a mortgage, they give you a mortgage for $400,000. But at the end of the day, if you buy a house for $400,000, can most people afford that? I don't know. But at this point, we live in an aging city. The Hoyok is an aging city that needs fire protection. You know, I've gone to enough fires to see that we need trucks. We need manpower and women power to fill these trucks. And so, I'm all in favor of safety, and I'm all in favor of the questions that have asked since the finance meeting, that I think that we can do this. This is a possible thing for the city. Not only is it possible, it's something that we need to do because of, because of this being an aging city. So.
Thank you.
Pretty much all my questions are asked and answered, and I just wanna say, let's go with it. Thank you.
Counselor, sorry, Counselor Bacon, did you have a question?
I just wanna be sure that we're clear about which orders are before us.
Yep.
Because the one with the 2.5 million is 16I. And item 56 is the 1.6.
Make a motion to take up item 16I as well?
Because I believe we took up.
All right, we didn't take 16.
56 and 57.
Yep, so.
And the late file.
So, we took up the late file.
Catch.
Only, because we, that was the motion. The request was to take up. Was it 50?
56 and 57 out of order.
56, 57, and it should be 16I as well, because there's three different ways you could attack the problem. So, 16I, for those who are at home, this is a request for $2.5 million, which was the original bond request, of which, actually, was, we were gonna refer it out without a recommendation, but then we made a motion just to receive and adopt it, to get it out for discussion. And then, we were under, in that discussion, we said we'd also have some orders come in with regards to different options, which is the 56 and 57, which is saying, if you just wanna do the two apparatus and accept the bond, you're gonna do the 1.6, which would be 56. Because what came before us was an order for 2.5. Because what came before us was an order for two point five, and then the grant came in. So you don't need the two point five anymore, you only need the one point six. But then as we started getting into discussion, there were certain apparatus are, are going to go offline within the next two to three years. It's guaranteed, and that's the Quint. Of which, in that discussion, it was, if you add the Quint into the mix, do we get discounts for packaging things? Of which, the chief went out and asked, and they said, with the three apparatus, it would be two point six million dollars for three apparatus and including the, the bond. Or not the bond, the grant.
Correct.
So in essence, you're getting two ladder trucks and the Quint, and really, the grant's helping offset the cost of, almost the whole cost of the Quint. With that, can you explain the numbers? If we don't do the Quint and just do the two apparatus, it'll be one point six. By adding in the Quint, what is the cost of that today? If we don't add it in and wait three years down the road, what's the cost of that later?
I can make this simple math. Nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, we're just making it even a million. If you do not get it now, every year, the cost can go up three to five percent. So you're looking at thirty to fifty thousand dollars a year. If you compound that each year over the next three years, you're looking at somewhere in the range of ninety to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars more to purchase that Quint. So the difference is, every year, you're going to spend thirty to fifty thousand dollars more to buy that Quint. So if you buy it now, you save later.
Next on the list was, sorry councillor Bacon, did you have any more questions, or did I explain it to help out?
I just wanted to make sure everything was on the table when we get to the discussion of the items.
Okay. So councillor Bartley.
Thank you. So chief, we have a grant for one aerial, aerial truck?
Correct. We have nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars towards the purchase of a ladder truck. It doesn't completely cover the total purchase.
Okay. And then, but that has to be matched, so if we, if we, why, why isn't that an option, to purchase one, because we have a significant grant? Why, is that not an option?
It's an option, but you already have, our, our reserve truck is already completely out of service, it's not coming back. So that leaves us with two frontline ladder trucks. Those two ladder trucks are already exceeded NFPA standards for frontline apparatus. One of them is in very poor condition and should be taken off the road immediately, but we're legging it along like other things. So you're going to end up with one ladder truck, and if you just buy one, you'll end up with two frontline, you'll have no reserve.
And just so we're clear, that, these, these are not, the vehicles are, they're browned out?
No. These are fully staffed.
And, and so I'm just going to make it, you know, based upon that, Mr. President, I, and I heard the chief's argument for, with the, and I heard the chairman's argument as well. But, and it may sound like it's a cost savings, to procure the, all three vehicles at once, it may sound like it's a deal. I cannot support option one as, as the chairman explained it, but based on what the chief said, I, I would support option two, according to the chairman's description, which is not, does not include the Quint. So this would be with the one point six million. I will not vote for the two point, whether it's five or two point six million. And I just want, one last thing, Mr. President, I'm very happy to see, in the order, under fifty-six and fifty-seven, the final paragraph, which I didn't name it, but somebody else did, how they, it has to come back to the city council if there's going to be a change. I don't see similar language to that in sixteen I. So I just want to point that out for the, for the body. So, thank you.
Councillor Bacon?
So I guess we're discussing all the orders at this point. I thought originally we were just on the grant, but if we're, if we're discussing all of them, I, my comment that I want to share with my colleagues is that while we are well under the ceiling of our allowable debt, we've every once in a while asked people to share with us the carrying costs of the debt that we have. And it amounts to thousands and thousands of dollars in the budget each year. So I caution my colleagues in loading up the debt, and our auditor did caution finance committee in this regard as well, because we have already voted in some fairly significant additional debt with park improvements, tennis improvements, the pool and some other projects. So he did caution us on that. And I think, for me, I am very grateful for the work of the fire department to get the grant, to save on that debt carrying cost, and I'm fully supportive of the two vehicles to make sure we have adequate support in our own city. And I would encourage support for item fifty-six, which is the one point six-two-five also. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councillor Sullivan?
Yep. I've got a couple of comments here. The, the first one, as far as the, being able to afford the debt, I'd like everybody to think back to the votes we took just a few short weeks ago on the budget. And maybe as we approach it next year, knowing we've got some of these looming, we'll give a little harder thought to the two hundred thousand dollars that goes to Hoyok Gas and Electric, looking through the minutes of their meeting. We couldn't, we couldn't cut five thousand bucks from that. But there was fifteen hundred thousand that went to the mayor, I'm sorry, fifteen thousand for fireworks. Maybe, maybe we get a new fire truck and we forego the fireworks, or they find some other source of funding. But I can't, I can't believe, and then add all the other stuff we've seen through the course of the year. Money for, money for new parks when we can't maintain the ones we have. Christmas trees, all the rest of that stuff. The money is out there, all right? And we, we can afford it, we just have to be more prudent in our spending and make some of the hard cuts that we need to make so we can afford these safety items. The second point I'd like to make, even though I'm going to be in favor of all three trucks, is that we put some pressure on the department. We have trash truck drivers in Hoyok that are required to have a commercial driver's license. Now we have all these vehicles that we have to replace, they're sixty thousand pound vehicles, all right? And nobody has a commercial driver's license. And despite the age, the mileage is low and doesn't warrant the, the type of repairs that are being necessary. And really take a hard line, when we come to public safety, I'm not in favor of people not getting pay raises that deserve it, but this is, this is a matter of public safety. They should have a commercial driver's license, and they shouldn't be entitled for more pay to get it. And I know this is getting a little off-topic, but we need to think about this over the next year, because this is where the maintenance comes in, right? When, when you've got people that don't have the proper training, even if it's in-house training, it's not CDL training. And I'll go back to what I've said before, a, a person delivering milk for hood or driving a city trash truck has to have one, and somebody driving a sixty thousand pound vehicle around the city should have one also.
Anyone else? Councillor McGivern?
Just real quick, my reasons, I think some of the members of the finance committee's reasons for the, for the option with the three, three apparatus, is within two to three years, the Quint is, is not going to be appropriate to keep online, keep on service. And we'll need to replace that vehicle in some way or the other, as the chief said. If we wait two to three years, that could cost us an additional hundred-plus thousand dollars. That's just the cost of the vehicle. But then we, if we borrow money, then we have to look at paying off the money that we borrow then, which could be at a higher rate than what the rate we will be getting now. We're getting a little bit of a deal, but more important, we're spreading out the, the payments on the vehicles, but more important, we're bringing our fire apparatus up to snuff, up to safety for the men and women who operate it, and up to safety for our citizens who need this type of service. And, and hopefully we'll not see a great need, but we know that if there is a fire, that we have the correct vehicles to respond to the fire. I would suggest, Mr. President, that, I mean, I, I hope that the late file bond is something that we could adopt first, being that, and I respect the councillors that, that are looking to keep the, the costs down, but that we would, we would do the late file first, do the two point six second, and then do the one point six-two-five with the grant third. I think that would make a little bit more sense.
All right. So is there a motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading with regards to late file E, which is the grant?
So moved.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Any other discussion on the grant?
Late filed E, not C. It's E.
E.
Thanks.
No further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for the grant. Just acting on the grant.
Teplice?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the grant. Next councillor McGivern?
Make a motion to pass the reading of the two-point, item number fifty-seven of the two point six million dollar bond.
Just make sure we do it correctly. Motion is to, I believe we do it, but just to make sure we got it on the record correctly. Motion is to go out of order and take up fifty-six, which is the one point, you wanted fifty-seven, sorry.
Fifty-seven first.
Fifty-seven, which is the two point six. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So we're now taking up item fifty-seven, which is an order for the sum of two point six million with regards to two aerial ladder trucks and one Quint truck for the city of Hoyok, with the bond language drafted correctly. Councillor Lisi?
I just want to get some, some clarification, because I feel like at least two of these orders are redundant to one another, and I, I'm just getting a little bit confused.
Okay.
So the two point six is the full amount that we need for the two aerial ladders and one Quint truck. But because we have a bond, a grant rather, the bonding amount is offset, and that's what we see in fifty-six, as opposed to what, what the order approved out of committee was for the two point five?
No, good question. What happened in committee was sixteen I. We received a bond request for two point five. And that was for two ladder trucks. After that was filed, a grant came in for the, what we just approved, late file E. So that, in essence, made the bond incorrect, because it was asking for more than what was required. When the discussion went on was, how do you want to send it out? We could just send it out if there wasn't any other bond language to try and act on something to then take up the grant as well. Of which, we just approved out the two point five, which we always can deny it and go on to the other two, which would be fifty-six and fifty-seven. If you take up fifty-six, that is one point six, which would get you the two ladder trucks, because you just accepted the grant to offset the total cost of two point five. Which then is, the discussion went further, is if you want to add in the third, which is the Quint, you'd have to take up fifty-seven, because that's addressing all three apparatus. Hopefully I didn't confuse people more.
Um.
No? Okay.
Just a little bit, actually. So, so the, so the two ladder trucks are in items number sixteen I and then fifty-six.
Correct.
If we want the Quint, the only option with the Quint is fifty-seven.
Correct.
Fifty-seven does or does not take into account the grant that we just received?
Does.
It does? Okay. Okay.
The only one that doesn't take into consideration the grant is the sixteen I, because it came in before the grant.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Councillor President?
Chief, real quick, the, the apparatus that was blacked out, do we still have that? Is it somewhere?
We still have, our both frontline ladders are still in service and operating, yes.
So, so there, there isn't, there isn't an engine or a truck that was, that's not in service, except for the one behind Lynch, the big ladder truck?
Correct.
So the, when you, so it blacked out, you just kind of moved trucks around? There's not an actual apparatus that is usable, that's being stored somewhere?
No, and that, that's, truck three is reserved, so whenever truck one or truck two went down, we would use truck three. That's forty years old, it's finally out of service for good. So if a truck does go down, we can take the Quint and bring it down, and we, sometimes we've been using that for a short period of time while the truck was getting some service.
And the Quint is basically just a ladder and an engine?
Correct.
And one, and one apparatus.
It's multipurpose, and then, you know, if you bond for all three tonight, that, the Quint that we have now, Engine Five, would become a reserve piece, and we could, it could multitask across both.
Thank you. This might be off, off topic just a little bit, but if, percentage-wise, how many calls are the apparatus going to on ambulance calls? Like if someone calls nine-one-one, how many, I mean, I know it's, they, the ambulance service kind of picks and chooses who's, you know, they're going to call you or not, but, I mean, it, it just seems that we could maybe save on trucks, and I, you know, I encourage us to go and maybe even look into the ambulance service again someday in the future. But even just getting one used one and kind of getting into the game, I'm, I'm very, very much in favor of, but I'm just wondering if, if we're talking about wear and tear on trucks, and, you know, you guys are showing up first before Action shows up, but we can't transport, we, you know, we can stabilize and, and take that fear out, because the boys are from Hoyok and they might know the folks in the house that they're going to in Hoyok. But I, I'm just wondering, I know you're not going to every call.
We, we do not go to every call. In fact, when we work with Action now, we have, if there's a call in our area and there's an Action ambulance in the same area, they go to the call. If there's nobody there, if they're not in that area, we'll send a piece of apparatus out, because we want to make sure we respond to our citizens. And as far as a, a fire department ambulance, I'm still up for that. I mean, that's, hasn't lost my mind, but there's so many other factors involved in that, and we can't really talk about union stuff in there, so I won't. So that's, that's a whole other story, but as we work toward the future, there's other things on the table we can talk about. And yes, we have significantly cut down on medical runs. We go on maybe two thousand to three thousand a year medical calls. We used to go on four thousand, so we have cut back. Thank you.
So on the table is fifty-seven, which is the two point six. So should it be?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, if, could I add something else to this discussion? As the city council knows, we do have emergency vehicle technician coming to the fire department through the DPW. We have our three pumps that are two thousand fourteen that were purchased. If you buy these three vehicles tonight, that'll complete our fleet. They'll all be modern vehicles with the new mechanic coming in that would help segue into the process of maintaining them. When we talk about maintenance, that's how you extend the life of a million-dollar vehicle, is you have the proper maintenance. And with the emergency vehicle technician, that will provide that maintenance. So thank you. Sorry.
No, no. So two, two point six is item fifty-seven. The motion would be to receive, adopt and pass the first reading?
Fifty-seven.
Looking to or?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-seven. Councillor Tomlin?
Yeah, I just want to make a statement, and I'm glad the chief came down the other day. As a member of the finance committee, we discussed this, and it's, it's one of those things that we, you could save some money now in the long run. With this vehicle, the Quint's going down in about two to three years, to have these, this fire apparatus up to date, I think it's important for the community and our safety of our citizens. Also, the, the chief stated that it takes about three hundred and sixty days after we order it. Is that correct, chief, to get these completed?
Correct. That's the max number. It goes from three-twenty to three-sixty.
Okay. And with that, and I'm glad this came up, the finance committee with that grant, it actually gives us three vehicles with almost the same amount of bonding that we're going to get with the two, with that grant, thanks to the deputy chief, Preskowalski. It was really important that, who, he, I think just recently got us a, a grant a few years ago, and he's still actively searching for grants all the time. But the importance of this, and I know there's a cost, and I know it's paid over the years, and we got to look at our budget, but my concern is to have these three vehicles now and to save maybe two to three hundred thousand dollars now, when we're going to need to purchase another Quint, and also to give better coverage throughout the city, where we could take that Quint next year and have that as a backup. You know, with two years, good, good life left in it, I, I think is important. So I would really have my colleagues really think about the, the savings in the long run, and I know the cost is there, but we were going to pay two point five million, you know, for the two vehicles. So we're, we're basically, for another hundred thousand, we're getting three frontline vehicles that can be utilized for the citizens.
Councillor Bartley?
I thought I heard him say, with his calculation, about ninety to a hundred fifty thousand, so there's that. I also be hopeful that if we got a grant now, there's nothing to prevent us getting a grant in two to three years from now. And the last thing I'll say is, the acting auditor came in, passed this stuff, and, you know, why don't you say so long to the pool? So, I mean, there's, I mean, every one of us here, I mean, I know we say stuff. We want to support public safety, we all do. So, there's, I mean, yes, we want the best for our brave firefighters and brave police officers. But we just got the pumper trucks in two thousand fourteen, now there'll be two aerial trucks here in two thousand eighteen, taken, delivered in two thousand nineteen. Mr. President, that is not a, that is a pretty good sign of faith. I know comments were made at the budget hearings. Maybe the city doesn't, council doesn't support the fire department. I think that was made more emotionally than anything else. But I think with this act right here, it's a pretty, it's a sign of good faith on the city council on behalf of the taxpayers that we're getting two vehicles. I would just say that the third is, for this counselor, is just a bridge too far.
All right. So, Counsel Bacon.
And I would also like my colleagues to consider that if the number of medical calls is in half of what it was in the past, and we're going to have the maintenance staff onboard, and the quint is still good, if that competent person is there to maintain that quint, then it's very possible its life could be extended significantly while we could continue to seek, as we have very effectively been doing, the grant funding. And again, I just want to reiterate how appreciative I am, and I know we all are, of the work that's been done to help save the costs because we've been asking a lot of the taxpayers. And from the looks of things, we're going to be asking a lot more, potentially, of our taxpaying citizens. Thank you.
No further discussion. Motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for item fifty-seven, which is the two-point-six million dollars.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Bresnahan?
No.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Nine a's, three nays.
So, next would be?
Take a motion that we deny both item fifty-six, and we deny the committee report sixteen I.
Motion would be take up sixteen I and fifty-six as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is to deny them. Is there a second to that one?
Second.
Under discussion? No further discussion. Clerk up. Counselor Roman. He's already suspended, so. Chief, you had a question?
I was just waiting in case you had any more questions.
So, hold on, let's just finish these. So, sixteen I and fifty-six, motion was denied. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to deny those bonds.
Sure.
When the yes is to deny.
Yes, to deny, yeah.
So, Lisi, yes?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon? Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Eleven a's, one nay.
With your vote, you approve fifty-seven, deny the other two. Next on the agenda, Counselor Martinez.
Can we take out a order thirty-nine because I have a resident who's been sitting here waiting, and she's here with a child?
Thirty-nine?
Yep.
Thirty-nine? Hold on, let's get to thirty-nine.
She also signed up for public comment.
Yeah, I was going to public comment next. So, same person?
Yes.
Want to do public comment first, and then we'll go to thirty-nine? You want to do it that way?
Thank you.
So, next on the agenda is public comment. We have one Samantha Si at one fifty-one Sergeant Street.
Hi, good evening. Can I, just before I begin, can I just say this man saved our lives the other day, and he was at our building within three to five minutes with his trucks. So, yeah. We're trying to, as far as the community, we're trying to stop the sex trafficking and the crimes and stuff like that for Ward one, two, and four, and I've been knocking on doors, and every resident has signed the petition that Ms. Gladys started and for us, and they, no one refused me, like, everyone agreed. The residents is really bringing the neighborhood down because it's trash, and they, they're constantly, it's, I call all the time. I drive home with my son on a daily basis up the street, and it's all the time, every day. And it's, they're coming from all over now, so we're just trying to get together, get all the, our neighbors together, the community, to have a meeting for the residents, the businesses, and to discuss the concerns that many residents have brought to our attention regarding the quality and the life issues affecting residents of Churchill, Prosper Heights area within Ward one B. We are going to have a meeting on Thursday, September thirteenth, at six P.M. at the Hoyoke Library, and we will have our residents and also, you know, the parents of the school, Lawrence, because I'm a participant of Lawrence, I'm a Wayfinder graduate also for the community, so I do cleanups and stuff like that. So, I'm like really involved with, I'm out there, and I'm seeing everything hand-on. So, I can speak for many people in the residents and in the community that it really needs some help, and that's why I'm here tonight. And I, my son, he, it's a lot of needles we see continuously. It's like a lot of drug trafficking, you know, a lot of today, it was a raid over there, so it was, it got cleaned up a little bit. But I live on Sergeant and Walnut over the barbershop, and I can literally look out my window and see these people getting high all the time. Like, and it's just, I call the police all the time, and it's, you know, it's only but so much they could do. So, the fire department and the police department, they need a whole lot more support from everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, now there is a motion to go to item thirty-nine. All in favor?
Aye.
So, this is from Counselor Martinez. Order for residents' requests would be? Hoyoke City Departments responsible for quality of life issues of homeowners and renters who are residing within Chestnut around the public, Hoyoke Public Library, Elm, Appleton, and Cabot near Lawrence School, address the blighted buildings, home issues, sex trafficking, opioid epidemic, and homelessness within the particular corridor for the betterment and quality of life for the residents and their families residing in this area. Counselor, what would you like to do?
Thank you. I'd like to have this be sent to the Board of Health, Police Department, the Mayor's Office, and the Hoyoke Fire Department.
So, motion is to receive?
Received.
Adopt. Do you want to go to a committee at all, or just want to receive and adopt?
Would it be, what would it be? Public safety? Yes, public safety.
So, motion to receive, send to public safety with a copy to Board of Health?
Yes.
Police?
Police.
Fire?
Fire Department and the Mayor's Office.
And Mayor's Office. Counselor Lisi.
Thank you. I noticed that we have an invitation to a community meeting next Thursday to discuss this matter. And I would make a friendly recommendation to the Ward Counselor that perhaps we invite the Board of Health part.
Yes, thank you.
At least a representative.
Yeah, it was going to be my intention to do that. We just got the flyer up today, and I wanted to get it to you all, attention. But those who are watching, please also attend the meeting. It's important. I want people to know I've heard you loud and clear. And thanks to Samantha and myself, we went out and got the signatures, and I think there's a petition that was certified here by our clerk office, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you.
Counselor Roman.
Yes, I want to thank Counselor LeBron Martinez and Samantha I know really well, and the whole Chestnut Community Alliance through Wayfinders, and being one of the counselors that shares, this is one of those weird parts of the city because of districting, that it's split between three different wards, and so a lot of the times, it's really difficult because literally you cross the street, it's Ward two, cross the street, it's Ward one, cross the other street, it's Ward four. But I do have to commend Samantha and the whole Chestnut Community Street Alliance. But two things off the top of the head in the Churchill neighborhood, even though they're energy efficient, the lighting in all of Churchill is horrendous, especially at night. You can't see from one property to the next. It's just really poor quality of lighting, so I really think the H G N E should definitely be, or receive a copy of this one. And two, this is happening everywhere with regards to trash or cleanliness. Just as an infrastructure and as a city, there's no receptacles for people to dump their trash in. And I only know because recently with Nueva and down on Main Street, we just requested four from Lynch, but I, you know, I'm always asking, how many of those receptacles are left at Lynch? Let's get them into the communities and neighborhoods. And I know for me, for Nueva, we physically take out those trash, and we dump them in our dumpster. We got one of the restaurateurs to do the same, and a building owner to do the same across the street. But if we physically don't have a place to put trash, then there's no place else to put it as well. So, I just think that that's another thing. We should check on those Lynch receptacles to get them out into these neighborhoods as well. It's made a marked improvement on the corner of Main and Hamilton Street. I just think that it could help alleviate some of those issues with regards to trash. And the street sweepers, I know that they're supposed to be on a schedule. I know I call frequently to say, hey, when are you coming down Main Street, or where are you coming down this street? But I think that we, as a city, need to do a better job of holding Suez accountable as to when their street sweeping schedules are and how consistent or inconsistent they are, and that's throughout the whole city. That's not just Ward one or two. I know throughout the city and throughout this ward, when I'm talking to residents, I don't care if it's Ward five or seven, the street sweeping schedule is inconsistent at best. So, I just wanted to thank my colleague and say I fully support this, and I thank Samantha, and I just want to address a lot of these issues that we still hear from a day-to-day concern and issue. And a lot of the times is response time. I know yesterday I just witnessed a car accident that took fifty-six minutes for a cruiser to come down, but the fire and ambulance were there quick because there was two kids in the backseat. But by the time the officer came out and was able to do a report, that's just that response time. And again, it's busy in the city, crime's upticking over the summer. I know Churchill's a hotspot, and we're trying with amazing community groups like this to do better, community, you know, engagement. They happen to be like the Neighborhood Association for that section of the city, but we have to do more too, and the community's taking some of that ownership. So, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, my colleagues.
So, just back to you, Counselor LeBron Martinez. We had two public safety, copy to the mayor, Board of Health, Police, Fire. Do you want to add on DPW, H G N E, and Suez?
That would be awesome, yep.
All right, adding them as well, getting a copy of this and asking Suez to do more street sweeping.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else?
What about the Hoyoke Gas and Electric?
Oh, yeah, he did, yeah, he mentioned. I'm sorry, yes, Hoyoke Gas and Electric.
Yeah, we got them listed.
Well, actually, the purpose of the meeting was to try to get more inputs about what people are saying. I mean, if I would have listed everything they said while we're doing this kind of work, it would have taken a whole page of me saying what else, you know, it's a situation of the blighted neighborhood and, you know, the lights and all of that. But there's, when you wonder why I listed all these individuals, when you go, if anyone has had a chance, we have people camping in our alleyways right now. They're not only camping, they're using our blighted buildings as galleries, which I'm afraid, I witnessed in my house when this big fire took place on Elm Street and Cabot, when the whole block went down. And knowing that that was one of the risk factors, you know, we have to take action. And this is why I'm calling everybody out and hoping that they can also attend this meeting on the thirteenth, which I'll be reaching out tomorrow.
Yeah, so with that, we'll have this order and the petition sent to all these departments. And then, please email your flyer, so that way it'll give the heads-up as to why the order, and then your invitation for the meeting.
Thank you, thank you.
Counselor Roman.
Yeah, I just want to highlight and actually thank a department who does a really good job. I know when I have an issue, we have the same problem. Damian Coating in the Building Department, whenever I have a blighted issue or concern, he's there to board it up or hold. We have slum lords in the city. Let's just keep honest. A lot of them don't live here. They have these blighted buildings. I'm just going to call it out. Some of them just live down the river, and I won't call them out publicly because they know who they are, but we almost had two buildings go up in flames. And the minute you call the Building Department, and this is for Samantha and everyone too, they are there to hold those people accountable, so I want to highlight the Building Department, and they're on it, like, daily fines, like, really, really aggressive with those individuals. And I had three properties in the Springdale-Inglewood neighborhood. One of them happened to have a disgusting amount of over like fifty-three cats in the building, in the home. And there was an odor coming from it. Poor Damian and the Board of Health guys had to go in there. But they really did a very fantastic job, so I just want to call out that department and encourage the public to call at any point Board of Health and Damian at the Building Department because they're really good. Thank you.
So, the motion is to public safety with all the departments that we've listed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. President, one last suspension of rules. Can we just take up item number fourteen? It's going to be?
Item number fourteen is petitions proceed out of order. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Petition for a new second-hand license at two forty-seven Main Street. So, if it's a new license, it would go to?
Finance.
Finance.
Motion to send to Finance?
So, motion is to Finance. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Sir President, if I could, the petitioner is here, I believe.
Okay.
We have a scheduled meeting for September twelfth.
It's listed as fourteen, but we got it. Okay, so to Finance. All right.
Sir President, if we could also make a motion to go out of order for Committee on Finance, item sixteen A and item sixteen C.
A and C. So, motion is to proceed out of order. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sixteen A, Committee on Finance has referred collective bargaining agreement for Hoyoke Deputy Chief Association, CBA, be received. And sixteen C, Committee on Finance has referred an order that there hereby be appropriated eleven thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-seven cents from firefighters to deputy chiefs, which would go in hand with the collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you, Sir President. On sixteen A, it's a contract at which we've all received copies of. The recommendation is that the, we've already received it, but the contract has been received. To ratify the contract, our job and responsibility would be item sixteen C, which is the transfer, which would take care of the contract for the current fiscal year. I would make a motion that sixteen C pass the first reading, and I'd be happy to give the committee report.
So, do you want to, Counselor McGivern, just take up sixteen C to pass, or you're taking them up both to? Because one's just to receive.
One is just to receive, sixteen A. We can do that just for, yes.
So, motion is to take up sixteen A, motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, six, I'm sorry, that meant sixteen A. I do apologize, sixteen A. Motion is now to go to sixteen C, which is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Is that the motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
Under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Sir President. We had the president of the union, a number of members of the union before the Finance Committee last week, along with our city auditor, and we discussed the contract, which we did receive. It was actually signed back in June. The copies came email, and then we officially received it on August seventh, along with the transfer to, which is before us this evening. Essentially, the contract is, the percentage increases were the highlights, which if you went to the second page of what we received in the email of the memorandum agreement on July first of two thousand sixteen, when the last contract ended, is a zero percent. July first of two thousand seventeen is one-point-five percent. January first of two thousand eighteen is one-point-five percent. July first of two thousand eighteen, one percent, and January first of two thousand nineteen, one percent. In addition, there are four different increments of longevity pay, starting with a ten to fifteen years. Each of these, a hundred dollars is added to them. Ten to fifteen went from seven hundred to eight hundred, fifteen to twenty, from eight hundred to nine hundred, twenty, twenty-five from one thousand to eleven hundred, twenty-five, twenty-nine from one thousand two hundred to one thousand three hundred and thirty or more from three thousand to thirty-one hundred. We did ask, I asked a question because I did receive a communication in the mail about a clause in the contract that if the firefighters' union got any types of increases, that the way it seemed to be worded that I received at my house was that the deputy chiefs would automatically get a raise. There is, my understanding is there is a clause in the contract, and I don't want to be a lawyer here, but that the clause would just reopen the contract. It would still be subject to negotiation by the mayor and designee and subject to appropriation by this council. The city's listener is with us this evening. He was not with us last week. If that's not true, I'd appreciate if Paul would tell us that, but that's essentially the contract. The committee is recommending passage of the appropriation to ratify the deputy chief's contract.
Anyone else? Counselor President?
Counselor McGivern, could you remind me how many deputy chiefs the city Hoyoke has?
Many.
In the budget, there's? I, in the budget, there's, if I remember correctly, there's one less than what was in the budget last year. I do, and I, I want to say it's five down or is it six down?
Six.
Thank you.
Six. Okay.
There's no further discussion. Motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion would be to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bertley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Obran Martinez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you're approved. Uh, communications, no more. So item four from the mayor, the veto of the salary ordinance. Councilor Bacon?
A motion to receive and a motion to override the veto?
Second.
Motion is to receive and override the veto. Uh, it was second under discussion, Councilor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. We just voted to spend $2.6 million on equipment and we voted for a contract which was negotiated and approved. This vote that we took earlier in the year that I believe was a unanimous vote was to give 11 people in the city who have not received a raise in five or more years at all. For the mayor to veto this while he's lobbying for a $40,000 pay raise in a current term strikes me as one of the most petty vindictive political vetoes I've ever seen. These people, 3% is 100% more than nothing. And it is still, as I pointed out when we voted it, the mayor's discretion to either come forth looking for the money to pay it or not. But to veto it, I just think is, is just bad politics. And I just think it's disrespectful to 11 people. And why pick them out? Personally, I won't support any raise for myself. I ran for a position, I knew what the pay was. These folks have been sitting there, held hostage by this salary study that's been worked around now for years and huge raises have been given to people who were the supposed victims of this salary study. There's only 11 of them, let's please stick by our guns. We voted it through, it was not controversial and I hope that we will just keep that, um, option available for these people. Thank you.
Councilor Lisi?
Thank you. Um, I voted in the end, uh, in favor of the, um, 3% increase to the 11, uh, employees who are still not, non-union employees, um, that have not had a raise in five or more years. Um, but I do want to call attention to, uh, some of the points as to why this 3% raise for 11 people is actually unfair and inadequate in the big picture of things. I, I do want to award, um, these 11 individuals something, but there are folks that have since, there, there were folks in the original salary study who were slated for salary increases that have moved into unions who have still not received salary increases. So while we may be taking care of 11 people here, there's still many others who are now part of unions who have not actually seen raises, um, who are not going to see raises because we're only targeting the, the non-union employees here. Um, additionally, the, the raises that, um, the 3% amounts to is, is somewhat haphazard and, and doesn't really, um, take into account the, the, the job description and the, and the merits, uh, and qualifications that individuals need to take on those roles. So 3% across the, the board can in some ways be inequitable based on the amount of work that the, the individuals are doing vis a vis one another. Um, and then finally, I think that the salary study was a really comprehensive attempt at trying to create market-based, uh, salaries, uh, that were, uh, just fair based on what people's job descriptions were. And until we create some sort of salary structure that looks at what people are doing and compensates them fairly for the different roles that they take on, um, I think that we're not, we're not doing our job as city councils in terms of taking care of the people that make the city run in city hall on a daily basis. Um, I think that we, I'm going to keep on pounding, it's like my mantra, uh, we really need to attract and maintain talent. And if we're not going to be offering market-based salaries, we're not going to get people filling the positions in this city, um, to do, you know, a top-notch job. And, and I think that we are, we're losing people left and right. I think we have a very high attrition rate and I wouldn't doubt that salary is a high, um, factor there. I, I think that we don't know for a fact because we're not doing any exit interviews to find out why people are leaving the city. But in the 10 years that I've served on office here, I've seen a lot of very talented people go to other communities to do the same job for a lot more money and probably for a lot less hassle, um, because those other cities are funding their city hall departments, um, probably more adequately than, than what we are doing here. So I, I am going to be voting in favor and overriding, um, the mayor's veto here, but I think it's important to call attention to the way that this 3% raise across the board for 11 individuals, um, is inadequate in, in a number of different, um, facets. Thank you.
Councilor Leahy?
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you. I'm not sure if you or any person at home could follow any of that. I certainly couldn't. However, I'm not going to say that I'm awarding any of these people any money. Uh, they have earned it. Uh, we are certainly not, as a city council, awarding them any money. These people, 11 people who have not received a raise five-plus years, uh, have earned a raise. I mean, just because they're not in the union, they're not getting a cost of living raise, they're not getting, uh, anything. As, uh, Councilor Bacon said, 100% of zero is, uh, you know, nothing. They're not getting anything. And so if they're getting 3%, you know, this is a start. These people are our employees. We need to take care of our employees. That's why people are leaving, that's why people have left, um, by sitting, um, uh, here and saying, you know, we should just wait for this or we wait for that, it's inequitable, ba, ba. Tonight we have, we have the option of making a statement saying that these people, 11 of them, uh, deserve 3% over five-plus more years. Let's get going with this.
Councilor Sullivan?
Yeah, thank you. In the mayor's letter, he's, he's states here that it's, he's vote, vetoing it because it's inadequate. I, I don't think that's a good reason to veto it. It is inadequate, we've all agreed it's inadequate. It doesn't preclude these people from getting more in the future. It gives them something in the meantime until this entire package can be acted on.
Councilman McGivern?
I, I'm supporting the override of veto because these 11 people have been held political hostages both by mayors, not just the current mayor, but prior mayors and by city counselors and prior city counselors, councils. The... Sorry?
Just talking about the mail.
The, um, I, I, I agree that, you know, one, one of the reasons the city councils have not voted for somebody's individual increases over the years was because not everybody was getting an increase. And thus, we have a salary study. A salary study that was well thought out, that we can amend, had no immediate financial impact on the budget, but could be used to give proper compensation to people who deserve it, not just these non-union ones, but also union members. And that salary study is being held hostage. By no means, voting to override the veto, do I think that this replaces the salary study. It's time that we act on the salary study, it's time that we look at a fair compensation for all of our employees.
Anyone else? Can I ask the legal department something? Can I make a motion, ask a question to legal?
Second.
Motion. Call the legal department?
Alls in favor?
Aye.
All else? Um, the, I, I may be totally wrong here. I just don't want to act on something and then it doesn't come through because it's not proper procedure. The order is that the salary ordinance for pay scales for non-union, non-slash-union employees have worked in the city for a minimum of 10 years and now that received a raise, uh, ask them for, by the treasurer, for the past 10 years be increased by 3% so that these employees may receive a pay increase.
Mr. President, if I may?
Well, hold on, I'm going to ask the question.
But...
Can, can we increase salaries? Can we require the mayor to increase by 3%? I'm just asking a question because I, I always thought we couldn't add to the budget, we could only subtract. And then two, if we're going to adopt something, we have to have it in legal form. So that's, I'm just, procedure-wise, I mean, that's why the veto might not even be valid. But I'll defer to legal.
So what we did is, I discussed with Bellamy, um, kind of the only way to go about doing this so that it would work is to create a new step, so to speak, in our, um, pay rate schedules. So you're not, and I've given the legal form, I believe, which kind of shows how that'll look. So what we did is we made a super, uh, super max step in, um, our pay rate schedules, both for library, we added that step, and for, um, just the regular PR schedule, we've added a, a super max. We've done it prior in, um, I believe it was department heads did this quite a few years ago at this point. Um, but that's kind of how it was done. So you're not, by making your vote, you're not giving them a raise, you're giving the positions the ability to have that raise, um, and they would have to be sought from the department heads just like anybody else. Um, and what the super max does is there's an asterisk that basically states, I believe you have to be employed for...
Five years.
Five years, um, to get that raise. So it's been done before, um, you're not, by making your vote, you're just allowing this step, you're not actually handing the money over.
And that's, that's my, that's why I want clarification. So if we override the veto, even if approved by us, they may still not get the 3%.
Right, they're still going to have to do the normal channels.
I just want to be clear so that people don't start calling us and saying, I'm supposed to get 3% of my salary and, well, if, if it wasn't a, okay, so we're, we're clear. Councilor Bacon?
I just want to say that, and in the initial vote, and again tonight, I reiterated that by passing this, we are not approving the pay, we are only approving the opportunity for the people to get the pay.
Right, I just want to make sure that people who are impacted or may be impacted understand that.
Right, right.
They may not, okay.
And we were careful in crafting the language so that it wasn't usurping any role of the mayor. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman McGivern?
Just note that that's the same thing with the salary study that's in the ordinance committee. It isn't giving out increases, it's just creating an option and mechanism to allow increases to, uh, to be with an appropriation from the mayor and approved by this council, you know, for any individual. The only exception with the salary study was if anybody fell below the minimum, that had to be brought up by law.
Mr. President?
Council, President and then Councilor.
I just had a question. So these 11 positions, I mean, with the salary study's been out there for it seems like years now, but these 11 folks that, they're not in that salary study that was presented to us, when it was presented to us?
They are, as are the other 40 some odd that did receive raises.
Councilor Bacon, then Councilor Lisi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, relative to the salary study, the salary study was properly taken up in committee. It was brought before this body. The body did not act on it and returned it to committee. At the time that the salary study was taken up, it was very controversial relative to the elected positions and the huge raises that were in, at least one or more of them. And at that time, we were given a legal opinion that the salary study was all or nothing. And at that point, it was sent back to committee. Since then, there have been requests for modifications to the study. The president and I met with the mayor, had a discussion in that regard. We've had no further communication, to my knowledge, in that regard. Right now, as it stands, it's an all-or-nothing package, which takes our mayor from 85,000 to 125,000 while we're sitting here and, you know, having a debate about whether the study should be taken up. There have been meetings on it, there have been opportunities for discussion. I'm aware of no feedback in that regard since then. If it exists, let's see it. If it doesn't, I'm tired of getting beat up about it. Thanks.
Councilor Lisi?
Um, so the two things I wanted to note are, um, number one, of the 11 employees, only some were in the salary study, others were not, which is why I was saying, um, a 3% increase across the board gives some people a lot more, uh, of a raise than what they, um, would have gotten, what do I want to say? Relative to the other people that are getting 3% raise or getting a lot more, that 3% means a lot more to, to some people than it does to others, um, because it's not reflective of the job descriptions and the duties that they're doing. So of the 11, some were and some were not in the salary study.
Yes, sir.
Um, relative to this, to the, to the salary study and the all-or-nothing deal, that is not the case that I recall whatsoever. We had passed out of committee, out of the ordinance committee for the full council's review, schedules A and C of the, of this, of the salary study, and left out part B, which was the elected officials' pay. And what we wanted to pass was the, the section, the schedule A, which was the non-union employees, schedule C, which was going to be contracted employees. Um, and, and, uh, I think there were some other positions in there as well, but schedule B was the elected officials. And we said that we weren't going to touch the elected officials, um, because it was controversial. That was the only controversial, controversial piece, if you ask me. The other, the other pieces were all market-based, um, salary increases based on job descriptions and duties in similar-sized communities such as Hoyoke. So, you know, I, I, I think that it's really just sent in committee forever for, for, for the preferences of the chair and that's it. I think there's a lot of people on this council who would like to see that order taken up again. Thank you.
Councilor McGivern?
The salary study is not all or nothing, it is an ordinance that can be amended in many different forms. The actual salary study, as Councilor Lisi pointed out, came with at least two or three options. Nobody wanted to touch the elected official salaries at the time. And at one point, we can't touch them because there are certain parts of a term where you cannot give an elected official until the next term, to, you know, after the election, any type of an increase. I, I think there's a lot of confusion and not alone Lawrence, to get this on the agenda in the ordinance committee so we can have a discussion in public about what we can and can't do.
On the motion?
So before us right now is a motion to override the mayor's veto. It was seconded, there's no further discussion. Clerk's going to call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to override the veto. Or no, it's not too...
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bertley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yeah, yes.
Obran Martinez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
All opposed? Number six, a letter regarding the MSBA board vote, that would go to finance.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Number seven is from the city solicitor, the host agreement, charitable donations to-
Ordinance, because that's what the other one is.
To ordinance. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Number eight is from the assistant city clerk, Minutes, and number nine is Minutes.
Received.
Motion is to receive, eight and nine, well, actually-
Actually, we need to receive and approve the, unless we have, we don't have the, the narrative minutes?
Narrative minutes? You should, right? You have them?
Are they included in the same?
Ryan's saying yes.
Okay.
So let's go with number eight, motion is to receive and approve the minutes. Nope. Counselor-
Yeah, Mr. President, can we, this is a little bit unusual, but can we take up number eight and number, oh, wow, package, suspended rules put package, eight and thirty-three as a package, please?
Thirty-three, that's, get to thirty-three.
And send them, oh, boy, send it to, send it to DGR, if I could just, I'll explain in a second.
So, motion is to go out of order, take up nine and-
No, eight.
Eight.
Nine, no, I'm sorry, geez, I'm sorry, President, nine, I was, can't-
I heard you trying to change it up, Counselor.
Good gosh, nine and thirty-three.
So, go out of order, take up nine and thirty-three-
Yeah.
-as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Uh-
Nine is the minutes of the meeting for the fire commissioner for July 18th, thirty-three is an order from Counsel Bartley, ordered that the city council approve a set of license, a set of license agreements between Action Ambulance and the City of Hoyoke for fire stations one, three, and five, and former station four ninety South Street, draft language attached to be distributed to all the councils.
The motion is to refer it to DGR.
Motion is to take and refer it to DG and R, both.
Yeah.
Under discussion, Counselor?
Yeah, just, we have another order, and I, I don't want, our heads will explode in a second, but we, 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 we at this body have passed into ordinance several years ago. If you recall, we had a issue with the geriatric authority, and we were given an opinion by the former city solicitor that licenses, even though that is a, even though what happened to geriatric authority, there was a transfer of city property. As you know, if we have, if we sell it, or if we procure city property, it has, we have to vote it through this body, you know that. Well, we were given an opinion by the solicitor at the time, that this is what they were doing to geriatric, if we, they were, the city was giving them a license. So what did that mean? It meant that they were gonna go around the city council and contract with Gondara to give Gondara a license without approval by the city council. So Kevin and I filed an order, an ordinance change, and we passed that ordinance change so that all licenses have to come before the city council. So when I was reading the minutes to the Board of Fire Commissioners, it said, "We're just gonna go ahead, the city's just gonna go ahead and grant the license to Action Ambulance." And it seemed in those minutes that they were gonna go around the city council yet again. Well, that's impossible, because we have it into ordinance, or so we thought. Come to find out, it appears in the muni code that the ordinance that we passed, which I, I have in my, my briefcase, the ordinance that we passed was deleted from muni code. I don't know how or why, but I can assure you that it's section two dash three four nine, and of course, it was vetoed by the mayor, and of course, just like tonight, we overrode the veto. I mean, I think he's one in seventeen on his vetoes, so that, there is, there's no, there's no shock on that, but we passed it. I, I don't know why it's not in muni code, but, but you're, you're gonna see another order coming up tonight, just, because I was, I was conferring with Attorney Payer, and he's quite right on this, just out of abundance of caution, we're going, I, when I filed another order relative to licensing, that we're gonna refer to ordinance committee, I'm gonna ask the chair to take it up promptly, hopefully next week, so that we can immediately pass it back, because we, we already passed it once, and I have this here, and when I, we go to ordinance next week, I'll, I'll deliver it to, to the chair lady of ordinance. So that was my consultation with Attorney Payer. Did I say it right, Paul?
Okay, all right.
So that, I just, that's why, I just wanted the explanation, and I apologize for being a little lengthy on that. So it's nobody's fault, it just-
No, you are correct, we passed it.
Okay, it's, yes, nobody's fault, but we just, Attorney Payer said we should take it up again, so we're taking it up again, just, so there's that. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, so nine and thirty-three to DG and R.
Please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Back to eight, which is the minutes of August 7th, motion is to receive-
And approve.
And approve those minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eleven is from Terry Shepherd from Park and Rec, with regards to the Memorial for Veterans Park. Would we like to send that to a committee, or just receive it?
Motion received, but up-
Counsel Bartley.
Motion received, all right, just make a second on that.
So just to receive it?
Yeah. Big kudos to, well, big kudos to Counsel Tolman on, on that one, because that's really something that we, uh-
I didn't do too much in that, as Mr.-
Well, it was just something that was really proposed in block grant time, so.
All right, so motion is received, that one. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twelve is also from Terry Shepherd, Director of Park and Rec, report on detailing expenditures from January 1, 2018 to August 2000, August 28, 2018. There were three revolving accounts, which is Robert Field, Community Field, and a general revolving account, and she gives a breakdown of all those accounts. Motion be to receive.
Motion received.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirteen is from, is a petition to the city to examine its recognition for the second Monday in October as Columbus Day and replace with Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Mr. President, I have to abstain from participating in the conversation and voting, these are actually my young people from my program, and so I help them, it's a beautiful thing, but I, I don't want to have any perceived conflict.
Okay, so Counsel Roman will abstain from this. It's a petition, where we want to send it?
Receive and send to public service.
Motion be sent to public service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Petitions, we already did. Committee on Ordinance.
Mr. President?
President, report.
Can we, just under your president's report, can I add something?
Uh, I forgot president's report. One thing, I only have one thing, if I don't do it, Joe will throw something at me. No, I'm just kidding. This is a communication from James Chakowsky, President of the Hoyoke Merry-go-Round. Please accept this, our invitation for Saturday, September 15th, where over 200 members from the National Carousel Association will be visiting the Hoyoke Merry-go-Round, of which the visitors will arrive at 8:30 and depart around 9:30, 10, of which the City of Hoyoke, or the Hoyoke Merry-go-Round will be recognized and receive an award for 25 years of service to the City of Hoyoke, so that is September 15th, 8:30, and the Merry-go-Round is receiving an award.
Is that AM or PM?
It just said, uh, AM, no, AM. PM, if you want, Joe.
What is it?
No, AM, 8:30, AM, September 15th.
We're not awake at that hour.
Counselor McGivern?
If I could, Mr. President, that's, this group is, in the past 25 years, this will be the second time that they've come in to do something with the Merry-go-Round and to, not just honor us, but to honor us with their presence. If anybody has a chance, anytime during the morning, they're an incredible group of people that are very dedicated to what's left of carousels across the country, which is less and less every day we wake up.
Thank you. Counselor Leahy, you had a-
Yeah, I have four things. One is, if you, if all you guys get the opportunity to drive by Cleveland Street, the tennis courts are in, down in Jones Point, and I think you guys will be all extremely impressed, they, instead of going with the traditional colors of a tennis court, they went with green and purple, which are absolutely beautiful. Second thing is, we probably all got in the mail, our own, Hoyoke's own Carl Eager is getting an award for the Polish group, and if that's something you guys can attend, I would certainly recommend it. The third thing is, Hoyoke Medical called me today and asked me if they could, if I could just announce they're having their 125 Gala, September 16th, which is a Sunday, it's $125 a person up at the log cabin, and it's a Sunday night, September 16th. And the last thing is September 18th, which is not only my son's 18th birthday, and he'll become registered to vote, but it's also, Mr. Bartley has, uh, uh, got the Big E to recognize the beautiful city of Hoyoke at the Big E, and I also wanted to acknowledge that as well, and so that's the four things I have tonight. Thank you.
Counsel Roman?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I just have two quick things. One is, from September 15th to October 15th is Hispanic or Latinx Heritage Month, so Nueva Esperanza, where I work for, is hosting a slew of free community events. We have everything from a free playwright workshop, to a theater company coming in, a movie on Hurricane Maria in Puerto Rico, all free and available to the public, you all can participate as well, and so from September 15th to October 15th, all those events are going on, and we're doing a special Roberto Clemente 25th Anniversary softball tournament in the Flats.
Oh, wow.
One Hoyoke and Nueva Esperanza, so everyone's welcome, kids, family, to come down, and then that Saturday, actually, is the 30th Annual Taste of South Hoyoke, I thank my colleagues for coming and supporting that. This year, the press conference and the kickoff's at 12 o'clock, on the main stage, we shut down Cabot Street. I want to thank every city department that makes that happen. We have the Franio Show, we have outstate New York performers, 12:00 PM till 10:00 PM this year, we shut down Cabot Street, and I think on my call, the 22nd.
22nd.
22nd, 22nd of September, and a rain date, the 23rd. So it's gonna be a fun weekend down in the Flats in South Hoyoke, 22nd's the festival, 23rd's the softball tournament, we're just doing fun stuff for the family, and it's all free of charge, you gotta pay for some of the yummy food, and this year, we have over 16 food vendors this year, food truck vendors from, so it's, it's really-
Very impressive.
-growing really nice. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else? Counselor Tolman?
Yeah, I just want, real briefly, I just want to state that I, I thank Counselor Roman for the invite, I think Minneapolis got it on the first day of school, I got a chance to go down to Dean, Dean School, and the new STEM program, and also Morgan School to welcome the kids into schools. We had a few school committee members there, and a lot of the people in the neighborhoods through City Hoyoke, and to see that was overwhelming, to see the teachers out there, the administrators, Dr. Jreich out there, really welcoming the kids in school to, to show them that we're behind them and supporting them, so it was really a great event, I'm glad I got a chance to, to do that, that, this year, and I'll, I'll definitely be back next year.
Nice to be retired, huh?
Sure is.
Um, just as Counselor Leahy pointed out, just make sure, on the 18th is Big E Day.
Yep.
And that's why we moved our meeting to the 19th.
Yes.
I was asked by the legal department to have a executive session prior to the meeting on the 19th, to update us on some cases that have come about, and some things we might have to act on relatively soon down the road. So that would be at 6:30. Is that good for everyone?
Hmm.
So on the 19th at 6:30 down here, then 7 o'clock would be the full meeting.
Yep.
Just wanted to give everyone the heads up on that. And with regards to the schools, I had the opportunity to go to Ian White to welcome back the kids with State Rep Vega, school community member, Niles Core Shane, and a ton of people from People's Bank. People's Bank sent over a bunch of representatives to, in the fire department, to welcome back those kids, so it's nice that they're getting out there, and some kids were just in shock. And so with the teachers, they had balloons and everything, you know, Principal Gashin does an awesome job over there, so it, it's just great that we do this. Counselor-
Yeah, while we're at it, let me just say that the, the, one Hoyoke also coordinated in conjunction with Nelson, they meet the childrens at the door too, and I was part of that, and it was beautiful this year, actually, all these kids with the uniform, it's getting better, and I love it. Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, I'd like to take just a minute to give some special recognition to Officer Emo Morales also, for the excellent job he did. For those who were out on vacation and stuff, we had a tragic shooting in Hoyoke, and Officer Morales was on the scene, and at the other end of the alley, a woman was giving birth. And thanks to his fast, fast response and action, it was successful, and both are doing well. And along that note, anybody that would like to see Officer Morales in action also, he will be, he is the president of the Old Timers Softball League also, so you can catch him at the game and catch him in action there also.
All right, well, thank you, everybody. With that, we're back to finance, 16A was already taken care of, 16B, Committee on Finance has referred in order that the sum of $420,000 be appropriated to pay the cost of design construction of traffic signals at Westfield Road and Applemont Highway. Motion is, uh-
And 16B, make a motion to receive, pass the first reading?
Second.
To receive, pass first reading, under discussion, Counsel McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met with both our Ward Five representative, with Mike McManus from the DPW, our new engineer, and we had a discussion on this intersection, which I think is, the issues about this intersection are no surprise to anybody on the, on this board, or no surprise to anybody who uses that intersection at any time during the week. What we have before us is a bond, excuse me, for the amount of $420,000, by adopting this bond would get us through a design phase, get us through the, not only the redesign, but the re, redoing of this intersection. It would be a standby, standalone intersection in terms of not working with other nearby intersections, however, the improvements would make a big difference in terms of the, not just the safety, but the efficiency of this, this very well-used intersection of Westfield Road and into Applemont Highway and Homestead. Recommendation is to adopt and to, to borrow the $420,000, to allow the mayor and state treasurer to borrow the money.
Counselor Veken?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the finance committee for acting on this and recommending it forward, I believe it was unanimously. I was able to attend the meeting, and thank you.
And for everyone's, so they're aware, the bond has the language that we have required, that no changes in purpose of this bond authorization prior to approval by the city council, so that is in there.
Bartley, man, I didn't name it.
So with that, motion is pass the first reading.
I didn't name it.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the 420.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos? Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
11 yeas.
With your vote, you approved it. 16D, Committee on Finance has referred in order that the mayor and others knowledgeable, please provide details, explanation on how the city employees personally paid for IT services prior to fiscal year 2018. Recommend that it was complied with, I think it was, or adopted.
I believe it was, the recommendation was to be complied with. Make a motion to receive and adopt.
Motion is to receive and adopt, under discussion, Counsel McGivern?
Thank you. The committee did, did take up this order, which poses a good question of, even though I think the individual was doing what they thought was the best thing at a very crucial moment in time to, to save the, I, I believe it would be the website domain, if I'm saying it correctly, and I, and I, I think I told them, everybody, I understand that, because I lost a website domain once, and you actually get held hostage if someone else grabs it and buys it underneath you, despite the name that's on it. So we, we did hear, and we did, we did, you know, pose though, and I think the auditor agreed with us that, you know, it's, even though it was a noble act on the individual, the question is, how could someone do that, and approvals need to be done before money is spent, but the, the explanation was given to us.
Counsel Bartley?
Yeah, I, I filed this order, and I, I did confer with the chair, and I'd like to have this, this table for tonight, Mr. President.
Okay.
Because I was advised by the Chief of Staff that he would send the paper trail how we got from where we started to where we wound up.
Okay.
And he's been reminded now through emails, to no avail, so I want to make sure we have the paperwork posted into the public record as to how exactly this, this happened. It's, it's, I mean, I really, I really appreciate the chair taking it up and being as diplomatic as possible about it, and, you know, I would, I'd do it the same way if I was in his position, but it's, it's frankly ridiculous. I mean, there's no way to sugarcoat that, it's, 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 it's just an impossible way to run a, a city government, to have somebody's personal credit card used to pay city bills, and then be reimbursed. I mean, that's nuts. That's crazy. Doesn't happen, happened here. So I, I want, I want the paper, so the, so the paper, and once everybody's done, I did confer with Joe before the meeting, that I'd like to have this table, and he, 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 I don't want, I don't want a table till just Joe's gotta say something.
Counsel McGivern?
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel Barley also conferred me prior to the Finance Committee meeting and told me that the mayor's office would be forthcoming with that information. The auditor did say he was representing the mayor's office or representing the city on this particular vote. And Counsel Barley did confer me this evening. If, I was just waiting to see if there's any further discussion and I'll make the motion to table.
I'll, I'll...
Motion is to table.
Yep.
It was seconded.
Second.
No further discussion. Motion is table. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 16D is table.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Counsel Barley.
16E, Committee on Finance has referred in order, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the city council accept the 2019 911 support grant.
I could just make a motion to take 16F along with 16E.
So 16E and 16F suspended rules take up as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that they both pass their first reading?
Motion is to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading for both. 16F is Committee on Finance for Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the 2019 911 training grant. So one's support, one's training. And it was seconded by Counsel Vacan.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Real quick, I, I hope, but I think they do speak for themselves. They do go hand in hand, but they are separate. 16, the support grant is for $175,400. This would be along with equipment, salaries, overtime, dispatches. We currently have four part-time dispatchers, which I believe is in addition to what we had last year with 12, 12 full-time currently. Well, 16E is $18,927 and that is the training part of the grant that, that, not just for new dispatchers, but for any ongoing training that the, they are required at least 16 hours, I believe, on an annual basis to keep their, their certifications up to, up to date. Counsel McGee did ask some important questions about equipment as opposed to salaries and the, we know that last year those questions were asked and the equipment was, a lot of equipment was purchased and some modifications were done to the dispatch room and the police station. But the, the bulk of this appears to be going towards saving the city money on salaries, particularly in overtime, but also in offsetting some of those part-time and full-time off, dispatchers. I made a point that this is a good grant and we do want to accept it and take the benefits of the money coming in. But from a budgetary point of view, we need to know this upfront on June, in June, before July 1st, so that we don't see that money remain in the budget if this grant is going to offset what we've already approved. But when you look at it, not accepting it is just looking a gift horse in the, in the mouth.
Anyone else?
I have a motion.
No further discussion. Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk Coleroy, if you vote yes, you're voting for both 16E and F.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
But your vote, you approved the E and F. 16G, Committee on Finance has referred in order, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53, city council accept the Homeland Security Grant.
Make a motion, receive, pass the first reading.
Motion is received, pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a $5,000 grant. It's an ongoing grant that we received for a number of years. Now, it complements a number of things that the, that the city does in terms of, not just related to, to national security and stuff, but in terms of being able to understand and be able to relate to what's happening throughout the, throughout the country and to be able to connect ourselves with the, with being in the proper position to, in case there was a, an emergency type situation. The committee recommends that the $5,000 be accepted and that the city be allowed to appropriately spend it. There are no match to it.
No match. Anyone else? No further discussion?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. The bulk of this is training. I think this year it's slated for the auxiliary police.
Correct. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk Coleroy, if you vote yes, you're voting for the $5,000 grant.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
But your vote, you approved the grant. 16H, Committee on Finance has referred in order a sum of $1.4 million appropriated to pay costs for replacement of traffic signal lights at 11 different locations throughout the city.
Make a motion, receive, pass the first reading.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass first reading. Under discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think there's a city councilor sitting here that doesn't recognize one of these intersections or understand that there's actually a top 100 list of intersections that are in need of some type of updating, some type of repair, and in many cases, replacement of what we have currently existing for traffic, traffic signals. This meeting took place with both Mike McManus, our new city engineer, and we talked and linked about the, the top 11 and why they were chosen. We talked about, is there enough money in Chapter 90 monies coming down from the Pike? And the monies that we do get, the very few dollars we get from Chapter 90 as opposed to prior years goes towards the repaving and surfacing and sidewalks and things of, of that nature that we don't have enough money to do our, our priorities there. The DPW does have to do in-house for this. The money, the, the, the match itself in-house can be done with what the DPW does with their, with their employees. And as Counsel McGee pointed out, this is the top 11 of a list of 100. And we recommend that, this is another bond, but we recommend that we look at borrowing this money so that we can replace these intersections which are in dire need of replacement and work.
Anyone else?
I will note that we've all filed orders, but I think this kind of came to fruition because Counsel McGee has been very vocal about this in recent years.
Oh, I've, Joe, I think I'm up to 11 orders on this, of which Dan took, took one up that's on the agenda tonight.
Trying to be diplomatic.
No, no, I'm very happy with this. This is actually something that the city has been in dire need of. So I want to thank all the parties involved. Anyone else? No further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk Coleroy, if you vote yes, you're voting for the 1.4 million to take care of 11 intersections.
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
But your vote, you approved the grant. 16H, Committee on Finance has referred in order a sum of $1.4 million appropriated to pay costs for replacement of traffic signal lights at 11 different locations throughout the city.
Make a motion, receive, pass the first reading.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass first reading. Under discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think there's a city councilor sitting here that doesn't recognize one of these intersections or understand that there's actually a top 100 list of intersections that are in need of some type of updating, some type of repair, and in many cases, replacement of what we have currently existing for traffic, traffic signals. This meeting took place with both Mike McManus, our new city engineer, and we talked and linked about the, the top 11 and why they were chosen. We talked about, is there enough money in Chapter 90 monies coming down from the Pike? And the monies that we do get, the very few dollars we get from Chapter 90 as opposed to prior years goes towards the repaving and surfacing and sidewalks and things of, of that nature that we don't have enough money to do our, our priorities there. The DPW does have to do in-house for this. The money, the, the, the match itself in-house can be done with what the DPW does with their, with their employees. And as Counsel McGee pointed out, this is the top 11 of a list of 100. And we recommend that, this is another bond, but we recommend that we look at borrowing this money so that we can replace these intersections which are in dire need of replacement and work.
Anyone else?
I will note that we've all filed orders, but I think this kind of came to fruition because Counsel McGee has been very vocal about this in recent years.
Oh, I've, Joe, I think I'm up to 11 orders on this, of which Dan took, took one up that's on the agenda tonight.
Trying to be diplomatic.
No, no, I'm very happy with this. This is actually something that the city has been in dire need of. So I want to thank all the parties involved. Anyone else? No further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk Coleroy, if you vote yes, you're voting for the 1.4 million to take care of 11 intersections.
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Oh, yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
But your vote, you approved the bond for 1.4. 16I was already taken care of. Public Safety Committee, 17A, Committee on Public Safety was referred in order to City of Hoyok talk with the National Law Firm of Scott &amp; Scott in regards to joining on the class action lawsuit against the pharmaceutical companies to recoup costs associated with the opioid crisis. Recommend that the order be referred to the full council without a recommendation.
Mr. President, if I could change that last sentence, it was a miscommunicated, bottom line is I didn't bring the letter that Paul Payer sent me to the meeting, so I couldn't recall. But we would like, I would prefer to have that item that it's been complied with, receiving, adopted.
Motion is to amend that it reads, recommend that the order has been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Under discussion?
Thank you.
Counsel President.
I'm just gonna, it's a two-page letter that I can send to everyone. The, the long and short of it is that the City of Hoyok through its council filed its complaint in the multi-district litigation alleging pharmaceutical drug manufacturers fueled the opioid epidemic by pushing highly addictive, dangerous opioids and falsely representing to doctors that patients would only rarely succumb to drug addiction. The nationwide multi-district litigation cases have been consolidated into a single federal court in Ohio before the U.S. District Court Judge Don Polster with a scheduled trial date of July 2019. So the City of Hoyok did sign on to a litigation. And it will not cost us anything except if there's a settlement awarded to the law firm that would be doing the representation for us or for the entire districts that are involved.
Counsel Lacy.
Who is the maker of the order?
Counsel Sullivan, myself. Why?
It's great. Thank you.
Thank you. He really is. No, she's right.
He wasn't, he wasn't ready for that comment.
I wasn't, yeah. Shocked by that. If I could?
Yeah, it was Counsel.
Counsel Leahy.
There you go.
Thank you. No, the reason I filed this is because many other communities and cities are doing this. You know, we need to have some litigation going on with drug manufacturers and also not only the drug manufacturers, but also the wholesale distributors as well. They're filling into the opioid epidemic. I once had a client on Hubbard Street in Ludlow, I was actually, when I was back in the pharmaceutical days, I was heading over there and I was blocked by ATF and all these different acronyms. He's in jail now, Dr. Jama in the 70s. He was, he was one of the highest amount of opioid riders in the state. And he wasn't even a pain specialist. He was primary care. It's just, it just, it, these poor people who are getting caught up on these drugs, you know, it's, you know, I'm looking at it a different way than a lot of other people. I'm looking at it, I feel very bad for these people. You know, they go in with a bad back and all of a sudden, and I've seen it, I've seen it happen. They go in, they get a month's supply, then because of insurance reasons, they kick it back down to half a month. But yet, they've been getting a month's supply of opioid drugs, you know, for six months. And now the insurance company's saying, well, you know, you're getting too much. So what are these people supposed to do? They're cutting the pills in half. Eventually, it just, it's a spiral effect. And so I'm glad that I, you know, I'm glad Counsel Lacy likes this order. That, that happy, makes me happy. And I'm glad everybody else does as well. So let's, thank you.
So this one is that it has been complied with?
Yes, sir.
With the information? And you can get that letter sent to everyone?
I will shoot that email out to everybody from Paul Payer or city solicitor.
So that's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those. Counsel President, I reviewed them. 17B to N are all complied with. You want to take them up as a package?
Sure.
If anyone has a, it's up to the whole body if you want to do it that way. I stopped for...
Motion is suspended. Take up as a package?
Motion is to suspend rules, take up 17B to N as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? If you can just give a brief on all of them and then we'll...
Yep. You know me. Rock and roll. 17, want me to read them or just?
So 17B, Committee on Public Safety was ordered at DPW repair, replace the entire stretch of Main Street from Ingleside to Main through West Springfield Town Line. C, Committee on Public Safety was referred, an order that DPW and the Alarm Division report back to public safety on update of traffic lights. That was me. Public Safety was referred in order at DPW and Marcus come before the Public Safety Committee to address the permitting and safety matters associated with the park located at the corner of Lincoln and North Hampton Street. Public Safety, 17E, was referred in order at DPW and Park and Rec, report back to public, on the status of all the parks in the city. 17F, Public Safety was referred in order that HPD enforce traffic ordinances, speeding and major concerns of neighborhoods and report back. Public Safety was referred in order that the auditor and the treasurer confirm that the $5,000 budgeted for the stage for sound and the Hispanic Families Festival be allocated to the festival. 17H, Committee on Public Safety was referred in order that Park and Rec Department and Commissioners provide the city council an update on the permitting says of the festival. Public Safety was referred in order that the city council consider acceptance of all private ways in the City of Hoyok as public ways. Public Safety, that the DPW superintendent give an update regarding the crosswalk at Hamden Street across from Stop &amp; Shop. 17K, Public Safety was referred in order that DPW and Park and Rec provide an update on the tennis court, Mackenzie Field, Puleat Pool and completion status and the bonding regarding that. Public Safety was referred in order, this is 17L, that the fire department through its alarm division give the Honorable Hoyok City Council report on the fire alarm boxes are working and which ones are not. M is in order that the Hoyok Police Department provide accident reports for the past five years at the corner of Hamden and North Hampton Street and that they evaluate with the city engineer to see if traffic changes are needed. And 17N, that the Law Department provide a dollar amount of small claim settlements against the City of Hoyok due to potholes on Main Street and Ingleside, Main Street through West Springfield Town Line. Counsel Bresnahan.
So 17B, that it's out, the Main Street, the potholes, from Ingleside to Main Street, we don't own that section of the road. It's a state highway. And any, any council that filed an order that wants like the in-depth, please just reach out to me. The DPW and the Alarm Division report back to public safety about traffic lights throughout the city. We just talked about the bond that's going through. The good news is we also have a transport improvement project through the state. The lights at High and Mapleton are going to be fixed and the lights at Main and Appleton are going to be fixed. And there's five other intersections that they're looking at. So it's going to be free money. So besides those 14 that are going to get done, we got two ones that are in the lower wards that are going to get done as well, which I think is great. Marcos Murrell come before the DPW, talk about the permitting with the Lincoln or Hampton Street. The gentleman that owns it is responsible. We're indemnified if it falls down and anybody gets hurt. He's out of the country. He's already fixed that structure one time before. It's an actual permitting process that goes through the Hoyok Cultural Council. Every two years, you have to renew the permit if they decide they want to keep the structure on the property and it's not bothering anybody, they renew it. If they don't want the project out there, the guy's got to take it down. He's a Hoyok resident. He's in Japan, I think, actually doing some artwork out there as well. So that was complied with. The status, the review of all parks. Mike McManus, I got to tell you, you got to call him into these meetings because he writes up this whole thing, every order. It's, you know, it's fantastic. Hot off the presses, August 30th, just sent to us. It's all before you. Talks about every single park and every project that's going on from Puleat Pool to the, the tennis courts. So share with your friends and constituents.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
And I agree with you. Mike McManus is doing a fantastic job. What percentage of that is the Parks and Rec Department doing? So low. Okay. Thank you.
Parks, Public Safety talk about Fenton Street, order filed by Counsel Bartley. The former chief says that the police department monitored the area, conducted 11 specified directed patrols. One issuer was observed and the person was given a warning. So that was complied with. Public Safety, the auditor and treasurer, the $5,000 always goes to the Hispanic Festival. It's under a line item known as staging and they get it every
Eleven of the 100 were actually in the city of Hoyok. So we do have some, I don't know if it's ironic that we're getting a bond for 11, but it is, it is happening. A dollar amount for the small claims and the potholes on Main Street. Again, we don't own that intersection. So Paul Pear sent an email. There have been no paid settlement claims arising from pothole or road defects on the stretch of Main Street running from West Springfield to Ingleside Park. This stretch of Main Street is actually a state road under mass DOT jurisdiction. And that's it.
Great job.
Well done.
Any questions for the Chair?
Counsel Roman? I just have to say, I want to thank Council President and he got all that information to me right away. And I can't wait for the State delegation to come before us because that whole swath of Route Five is a large chunk of Ward Two. And the potholes are ridiculous, the amount of calls I get all the time, the unsafety conditions of those roads. And so I can't wait for Senator Humison in Vega. I forwarded them those emails requesting that we get some state allocated funds for that stretch of the road. It is absolutely deplorable and terrible. And so I think Paul, I mean, I think Dan Brezner and I think Mike McManus for doing this and getting us and Paul also for getting us this information. But it's just terrible. This whole swatch of road is just really bad and it's a big chunk of my constituency. Thank you.
Counsel Talvin?
Yeah, I just want to say, it was amazing the amount of items he went through for public safety. I mean, I, and that's what a lot of us deal with on a regular basis. I mean, you know, constituents' concerns of safety, you know, roads, streets, paving, sidewalks, police protection. So I just want to commend my colleague that's sitting right next to to, for a job well done.
The meeting was much longer than what just took place.
Peter talked earlier than you did.
But I just had a cup of coffee. I am sweating a little bit. I don't drink, I don't drink coffee much. So if I spoke fast, it was from the coffee.
Counsel Bartley?
Keep it going.
So what I'll do, just sort of cheer to Nelson, I'll file an order under your name and my name for next meeting relative to the State delegation. I don't really like to do that until their elections are gone by. But I think they're pretty well gone by now. So I'll, I'll, I'll file that and send that, we'll have them come into committee in November, December, okay?
Yeah, good.
Anyone else? So we took up seventeen B to seventeen N as a package. The motion is that they have been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public Service, there wasn't any Department of Government Relations. There wasn't any Charter and Rules. There weren't any. Joint Committee on the School, nothing. So we're on to motions, orders and resolutions. Twenty-two is from Counsel Bacon, that the manhole covers at Homestead Ave between Kane and Sidell Farm be repaired or raised.
We take a package twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, it's in the DPW?
No.
Counsel Bacon? Just twenty-two? So motion would be receive, adopt and send to DPW. So twenty-two, motion is receive, adopt, send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-three from Counsel Bacon, that the speed humps be installed on Lower Rustfield Road next to Richard Rager Drive and Whitney Ave and Leon Drive. Petition is attached.
Receive and refer to ordinance and copy to DPW.
Motion is receive, refer to ordinance and a copy to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-four from Counsel Bacon, change this yield sign from Westfield Road to Homestead Ave to stop sign.
I think that has to go to ordinance too.
To ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Exactly what I was going to say.
Twenty-five from Counsel Bacon, that no change in pay for any elected official shall take effect during the current term of office. Individually know, individuals know the pay for the position at the time they run for office.
Receive and refer to ordinance?
To ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-six from Counsel Bacon, that the signs, that signs that are out of compliance due to size, location, buildings or yards be removed. Request that the Building Department, DPW ensure compliance removal as needed.
Refer to, I guess just to DPW and Building Department.
Probably Law Department too, because I would say that's a First Amendment right.
Well, we, it's not that they can't have the signs, it's the size, the size, which we do have an ordinance on.
So motion would be to receive?
And refer.
Refer to?
I wrote it both, just because I didn't have time to research.
But what committee do you want to go to to get a answer back or?
I think if we send it to Legal also, then Legal could just let us know.
Okay, so motion is to receive and send to Legal with a copy to Building Department, DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-seven from Counsel Valentine.
I said every one of them and she said no.
And then Chapter eighty-six to move the handicap parking space currently located at Oak Street to a location approximately 20 feet further south of Dwight Street. Said space will be located in front of 121 Oak Street. Send to ordinance? This one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Receive and send to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-eight from Counsel Bartley, order that HPD's...
About twenty-seven. Do we do that?
Yep.
Yep.
That went to ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Twenty-seven went to ordinance. Twenty-eight from Counsel Bartley, HPD set up traffic enforcement at Laurel Street near Willow Street. Why?
Yeah, Public Safety and copy to HPD.
Motion is to send to Public Safety, copy HPD. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Let's see, can we take?
Twenty-nine from Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, we can, I think we can take twenty-nine and thirty-two as a package, please. Both going to ordinance.
Motion is to suspend rules, take up twenty-nine and thirty-two as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-nine. An ordinance that no person shall erect or maintain upon a property, fence, tree, shrub, bushes or other vegetation which would interfere with view of motorists. And thirty-two from Counsel Bartley, order that the council adopt an ordinance requiring City Council approval for any license agreement for the use of city-owned real property, which is what he talked about earlier, I do believe.
Yeah, both ordinance, please.
All right, so both going to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty from Counsel Bartley. With speeding being a common concern, the citywide, the City Council recommend to the mayor that the request ten temporary speed humps made by the City Council and that if purchased, DPW city engineer would rotate them throughout the city.
Yeah, I'll either, I'll do it any way the body wants. I think it's pretty straightforward. So I'd like to adopt it tonight and forward it to the mayor.
Second.
Motion is to receive, adopt the request for ten temporary speed humps. Which way, I think we only have two currently, correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-one from Counsel Riley. In honor of the back-to-back New England College Baseball League championship, the City Council honors the Hoyok-owned Valley Blue Sox with a proclamation.
Yeah, receive and adopt.
Can you add it onto that?
I think the whole, yeah. Everybody, everybody.
Oh, great, yeah.
I think that's a great order.
If no objection, yeah.
Doing alphabetical order though, it's just the days first.
Mr. President?
Add everyone on.
Alphabetical order, so you're first.
Um...
There you go.
So add everyone on and Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. I filed a similar order last year and we still have the proclamation waiting. Dealing Hunter and Hunter's busy schedule and trying to get the owner in here has been more than difficult, but they certainly do want to come in. I've been dealing with Hunter all season long. And now we can give them two proclamations.
Counsel Bartley?
Yeah, I won't announce what, but I did speak with the owner. He's going to come in either at the first, at the second September meeting or the first October meeting.
All right, so either the 19th or first October. Can you make sure?
Oh, yeah, I'll get him.
You know, so that we have everything. Counsel McGivern?
I know most of the players, collegiate players are gone back to their hometowns, not all around here, but there are some local players. If we could invite, ask the owner to bring the local players with them, I think that'd be great.
That's a great idea, Joe. And yeah, we'll do that. And there's some local coaches too. So that's a great idea.
All right, so motion is to receive, adopt, add everyone's name with a request that we try and invite as many people, whether it's players, coaches to, and you'll confirm the date.
I'll work that out.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-two was already taken care of. Thirty-three from Counsel Bartley, order that the City Council approve a set of licenses agreements.
DGNR.
No, we did that.
We did that.
So that was already done. That was to ordinance. Was that ordinance or DGNR?
DGR.
I didn't write it down. Thank you. And thirty-four is from Counsel Brezner. Order that the DPW clean up vegetation around Lynch School. Motion would be to receive, adopt, send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-five from Counsel Leahy, that the Building Commissioner along with the Board of Health come in front of the Public Safety Subcommittee to discuss the City Hall annex.
Yeah, thank you. If we could receive and adopt, I'm sorry, receive and send to Public Safety.
Receive and send to Public Safety.
I'd like my name added to that too.
Adding Counsel Sullivan?
Yeah, there's been major issues over there that I'm not even sure if the City Council is aware of. So I'd like to bring everybody in and discuss this.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-six from Counsel Leahy.
Mr. McGee, or President McGee, thirty-six and thirty-seven is a part of thirty-six.
So I take them up as a package?
Well, it's, it's, it's one paragraph. It was a...
Oh, okay, so it's...
A parent wrote this. I filed it on behalf of a couple of parents.
So motion is to combine thirty-six with thirty-seven and just make it thirty-six. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, just so it reads correctly and record. That the Parker Mac Department cleaned the bleachers at Gillian Field. There is broken glass, broken bottles and trash everywhere. Parents of our Hoyok athletes have spent countless hours raising funds in support for our local businesses. They need the support for school budget does not fund.
Uh, send to Public Safety with a copy to Parks and Rec.
So motion is to receive, send to Public Safety, copy to the mayor and DPW.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counsel LeBron Martinez is thirty-eight, that residents who reside at 139 High Street be given permanent residency parking. See Letter Four from those residents.
Send it to...
So we're looking for parking stickers?
Yeah, so you got to send to ordinance.
Yeah, it must be sent to.
So motion is receive and send to ordinance.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're on to forty from Counsel Martinez, that no parking signs be placed on both sides of Pequatch Street, oh, I said that right, Kelly School entrance per principal request.
To ordinance.
Ordinance.
So motion is send to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Forty-one is already taken care of. Forty-two from Counsel McGee, that the City Council invite in Pam Pebbles from the TGAO Animal Control. She sent an email asking for this. So send it to?
Finance.
Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty-three, the City Council invite in Barry Feingold, the new president of the Hoyok Chamber of Commerce.
DGR.
To DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Mr. President, if I could make a motion to suspend rules to package the next, two different packages for the next several orders.
All right, so Counsel McGivern, fire away.
To go to refer to Committee on Finance, Item forty-four, forty-five, forty-seven, forty-eight, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three and fifty-five.
So just to suspend rules, take up forty-four, forty-five, forty-seven, forty-eight, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three and fifty-five. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is to receive and refer to Finance. Forty-four is...
Will you read it?
$1,050 from gas inspector to building commissioner. Forty-five is $160 to be authorized for personal department advertising. $3,000 is forty-seven from plumbing inspector to plumbing inspections. Forty-eight is a grant. Fifty-one is $83.33 personnel department for medical claims in prior year. Fifty-two is another grant from the Connecticut River CSO mitigation grant. Fifty-three is the recycling grant. And fifty-five is $4,288 from social worker to various line items that add up to $4,288. All to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
The second package, Mr. President, would be to pass this evening, Item forty-six, forty-nine, fifty and fifty-four.
Motion to suspend the rule, take up as a package forty-six, forty-nine, fifty and fifty-four. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Forty-six is injured on duty, which is from sergeant and patrolman, $3,000 and $13,000 for a grant total of $16,389. Forty-nine is another one from firefighters, $1,969 to injured on duty. Fifty is another one for injured on duty for another total of $16,389. And fifty-four is injured on duty firefighters, $1,969.
Motion to pass the first reading?
Motion is to pass the first reading under discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Quick explanation, same explanation. This is an accounting purpose transfer. A firefighter or a police officer who for whatever reason has to file an injury report automatically goes on injured on duty. It's the same salary that they get. It's just for accounting purposes and to keep track of when one is on injured on duty. We take it out of the salary account and put it into the injured on duty account. Mr. President, I know usually people ask how many, this is over more than one pay period. This is a few pay periods because of our summer schedule. But the order should have the amount of, the number of employees that this affects. Or not.
For forty-six, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people. For forty-nine. One. And it should be the same. Four, five, yep, seven. And then one.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion would be to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading.
If you pass the second reading, the clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the payments for injured on duty.
Lisi?
Yeah.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezner?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfers for injured on duty. We're on to fifty-eight from Counsel Roman, that a handicap sign be placed at 249 Elm Street.
Ordered.
Motion said...
Copy, but, yeah, thank you.
To ordinance with a copy to... All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifty-nine from Counsel Roman, that the Board of Health inspect the blighted rear of the property at 318 Elm Street.
Receive and send to the Board of Health?
Receive, adopt, send to the Board of Health. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sixty from Counsel Roman, order that the city amend its charter to replace the mayor as the chair of the school committee and make the mayor an ex-facto member, allowing the school committee to elect its own chair.
Charter and rules.
Motion is to send to Charter and Rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Just a quick point. I believe that's, I mean, it might be part of the charter, but it's also part of education reform. And I'm not too sure. It was just a charter revolt that we took when we made the mayor the other chair.
Take a look, committee.
Sixty-one from Counsel Roman, that the City Council pass a resolution in support of the nurses and staff at Providence Hospital who are facing cuts. Send to DGNR?
Yes, please.
Motion is send to DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
And sixty-two from Counsel Roman, that the city of Hoyok adopt term limits for all elected positions to be no more than four terms for all elected positions.
Charter and rules.
Motion is to receive, refer to Charter and Rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Lake Files. We know there are some, because we took one up. Lake File A is a communication from Bellamy, the acting order. This is with regards to the debt limit for bonding. I do believe we are... I do believe we all received this. Motion is receive, send a copy.
Copy of finance?
To finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? B is from Council Leahy, order that the city remove the tree in front of eighteen Columbus Ave immediately. It's dead and branches are falling off daily.
Also add Counselor.
So motion, act on it, you wanna act on it tonight?
Yeah, we could also add Counselor Burgos.
Okay, so motion is to suspend the rules and act on late file B tonight.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion would be to receive, adopt, and send to DPW, adding Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Yes, it's just under, I mean, Juan can talk as well, it just, it's falling down. It's piece by piece daily, and, uh, there's a lot of children on that street, and it's, it's very dangerous.
Yeah, I've.
Counselor Anderson Burgos?
I've received a couple of calls already, and there are children that live right in front of that tree. And it's, it's getting, it's getting to be a little bit, uh, chaotic. The branches are falling daily, and it's, and, and the tree looks like it's rotting.
That's true.
Okay, so.
He said protect the letter carriers.
Motion is receive, adopt, send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? From Counselor Leahy, late file C, order that the tree and bushes that are growing over the guardrail at one forty-one be cut back immediately. Refer to.
Uh, maybe the Mass Highway Department.
Yeah.
So another, we have to, some of those again, cuz late files. So motion is to suspend the rules and take up action tonight?
We could, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion would be receive, adopt, and send to Mass DOT?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
That's what it is? Okay, motion is receive, adopt, send to Mass DOT. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? D. Late file order for a special permit from Rise G T I Adult Use Dispensary?
For adult use dispensary, yeah.
For special permits?
We all got in a package about it, so.
Is it complete?
They completed it, I guess they didn't make it on time, with that, what it was, and. Right, didn't make it to the agenda on time, yeah.
All right, so it would be to.
Just receive and send to ordinance.
Just one question, for special permits, since they're not emergencies, do they not carry over to the next agenda item?
They do.
They do? Isn't that correct?
There's no emergency.
No, it's emergency.
That's, that's all I'm asking, is that the protocol? That's, that's the rules that we adopt. It's a special permit. That's why I mean, I, I mean, some of the other stuff, uh, emergency, we act on it. This is a special permit, which is different from us filing an order, it's a special, all right, I, I asked my question.
Is she going the next agenda?
I'd make a motion to adjourn, then. Let's just stop doing late filed orders altogether, because, I mean, we do this all the time, and, you know, late file A, what was the emergency?
It went with the fire apparatus that we approved the bond for. Motion is seconded to send to the next agenda item. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Nice habit. Late file F.
Mr. President?
Counselor McGivern?
Make a motion for reconsideration?
Motion is to reconsider. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
This business is spending millions of dollars in this city. And we can't give them the courtesy of taking a special permit application that they're required to file to get a little timing on this, to put it into committee to set up a public hearing? Is that what we're saying here this evening? Think about this.
No, we're saying that the public has the right to know what's on the agenda.
It's going to a public hearing, Counselor President.
I know, but they don't know.
Okay, listen to me, I'm gonna tell you, I know.
I'm talking to you, I'm talking exactly.
I'm talking to you just as loud.
All right. Out of order, out of order.
Cancel them, get them off, we don't want them.
Out of order, out of order. There was a motion, it did not pass. Late file F, order filed by Counselor Leahy Burgos, order that Mr. Douglas Wilkins has lived on Belvedere Ave with his bride for fifty-two years. Mr. Wilkinson now is eighty-three years old, has a major medical setback. Their neighbors have nine, I can't read that. Cars, cats?
Cars.
Cars, and parked them constantly in front of home.
Parked spot for cats?
Yeah.
So they're looking for a handicap placard, so, to ordinance.
Yeah, and it's immediate.
Actually, that's not an emergency that would actually go to the next agenda item either.
Tough shape.
Uh, G is from me, which is regarding the special meeting for September nineteenth at six thirty, which is the executive session, which was asked by Legal today, which is prior to our seven o'clock meeting that I told us about. So that would be.
What's the emergency?
Timing, we can always do it.
Timing of the special permit was part of that emergency.
We'll send it to me calling a special meeting and the executive session. We'll do it that way, too. All those in favor?